19, 2025, this meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Lehman.
Your Honor, please help us all, with this meeting, to be mindful and respectful of each other, listen to each other's comments, and realize everyone has a different opinion. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Long will be arriving after roll call. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Donnell?
Here.
Kaduk?
Here.
Kilrain?
Here.
Lastra?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Steinke?
Here.
Seven present, one excuse.
Okay, just a reminder for everyone who is here tonight, if you are here to participate with citizens' input later on in the agenda, you have to fill out comment cards, which are located on the table to my left, your right. You'll get another reminder later on in the meeting. If you're here for one of the either public judicial hearings or legislative hearings, you'll have an opportunity to speak during that time. So just a reminder. Item five is changes to the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? Or I'll...
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any other council discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Item six is recognitions and achievements. Six A is the 25 Florida section of the American Waterworks Association, and I'll turn that over to our city manager. Thank you, Mayor. I want to turn the presentation over to our Utilities Director, Jeff Pearson.
Good afternoon, I'm Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. Today, I would like to present the award to the City of Cape Coral Utilities Department staff, specifically the Water Production Division staff for winning the 2025 Florida section of the American Waterworks Association's Best Tasting Drinking Water Competition. They won first place. This is the second time we've won it, the last time was 2017. This competition was held on October 29 at the Benita Springs Utilities Department. The City of Cape Coral's drinking water was selected out of five Southwest Florida utilities. The other utilities were Town of Big Cypress, Ave Maria Utilities, Benita Springs Utilities, and Island Water Association. So right now, I'd just like for staff to come up, and I'll present the award to them, and have everyone recognize them for doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thanks for all your hard work. And next item is six V, the Serenio Vista Manatee Sculpture Recognition. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, I'm going to turn this over to, I believe it's Lucille? Yeah, hey, Lucille. Parks and Rec.
Good evening. The Serenio Vista Manatee Sculpture was created through a collaboration between the City of Cape Coral and Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife to celebrate its parks' beloved annual visitor, the manatee. In March of 2018, the Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife hosted the Manatee M Gala at the Cape Coral Yacht Club, raising over $15,000 to fund a unique and engaging addition for everyone who visits Serenio Vista. We would like to extend our sincere thanks to the Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife for their hard work, dedication, and generous contribution in bringing this project to life. We would like for everyone to join us on December 8 for the official unveiling of the manatee sculpture, Great Photo Ops, at 9:30 at Serenio Vista, again on December 8. Cape Coral Friends of the Wildlife, please stand.
Getting cozy with each other. All right, ready, up here, and I cannot see the lady behind you, sir. Yeah. All right, ready, one, two, three.
Thank you. Just wanted to say thank you to the Friends of Wildlife.
Yes, I'd like to really thank the Parks Department, the Park and Recreation Department, Joe and Lucille, for working with us in order to get this longtime project completed. It's a beautiful manatee. The unveiling, like Lucille said, is going to be on December 8 at 9:30. We'd love to have everybody there, all the citizens, please come, anybody that can get away, we'd love to have you there. It's a beautiful representation and a wonderful presentation for the Serenio Vista Park. Thank you.
Thank you, and we look forward to the unveiling. Okay, item seven, approval of amendments, do we have a motion regarding the mention?
Motion to approve.
And this is for the regular meeting of November 5, 2025?
That's correct.
Second.
All right, any council discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is business. Eight A is the consent agenda. I'll now open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items for discussion. Councilmember Lastra.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull two items from the consent agenda. Item number one, which is Resolution 189-25, and item number 10, which is Resolution 345-25. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Kaduk?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item number two, Resolution 287-25, item number eight, which is Resolution 339-25, and item number 13, which is Resolution 358-25.
Okay, and I believe we have a total of 13 items, one, two, three, four, five items were pulled, so I will entertain a motion for the remaining resolutions.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, removing items one, two, eight, 10, and 13.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, first resolution that was pulled, Resolution 189-25, was pulled by Councilmember Lastra, I'll give you the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like for our Public Works Director, Matt, I see him making his way to the microphone. The reason that I pulled this is because I wanted to explain publicly what this change meant in terms of, is this a want versus a need? And I want the residents to be aware of why this change was made, and where that this is already a budgeted item. Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, Matt Williams, Director of Public Works, good evening. There were a couple of things associated with this change order, and regarding the need, I think, you know, Director of Parks, Joe Patrello, could probably explain the need a little bit better than I can, but the initial contract was let to build four fields out there, with a future plan to expand to 10 fields total. With the extra real estate we had out there with the six fields, it was decided during construction that it'd be great if we could get those fields at least a bare minimum playing surface and get them irrigated for some extra fields out there for the community to use. I know that we have high use of all of our fields throughout the city, and I think the Parks Department requested that we at least get those other fields ready and available for practice field use. So we're not coming in and doing the sand base layer and the primo sod on top of that, and completing them like you would the other four fields, but they are going to be available for kids to practice and play on. So that was one part of the change order, the other one is to go from well water to surface water. Initially, it was designed to go into the mid Hawthorne aquifer to irrigate the fields out there. I think with the watering restrictions last year, staff and city management felt it was better if we went with the surface water option instead of poking another straw in the aquifer to irrigate the fields out there. So those are the two biggest changes associated with this change order, really to get some additional fields out there for practice and recreational use, and to go from well water to surface water.
Got you. So especially with the Hawthorne aquifer and all the issues we have had with it over the last 12 months, I think that definitely is a no-brainer. And when you say fields, you're talking about soccer fields?
I think they're multi-use fields.
Okay. If you could explain that, Mr. Patrello, and also, you know, make our residents aware we have a major lack in terms of playing fields for our youth and our grownups. So if you could explain the importance of that, because I know since I, when I served before, it was constant battle for soccer fields. So could you maybe go through that a little bit for the residents?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, and City Council, Joe Patrello, Parks Recreation Director. Oh yeah, so when we asked Public Works if we can get the irrigation lines out there, it was to give us more practice open space areas where the youth and adults can practice. We have a lot of adult and youth programs that have been requesting fields and space, but we just don't have the ability to. An example of that is I was over at Cultural Park about 5:00 PM the other night, and there's people practicing on a park that's not meant to be a sports field. So we're really trying to get more open space where they can engage and be able to practice on the facilities. This also helps us rotate fields, and our competitive place at Multi-Sports or Cape Coral Sports Complex or Pelican Soccer, those fields are extremely used by our Cape Coral Soccer Association, and they have kind of a primary use agreement there. So we don't have a lot of room to put in any adult leagues or any other youth leagues that might want to form here in the city, and we've had multiple requests to do that. So we're really trying to increase the number of soccer, football, or rectangular sport fields. We've had requests for lacrosse, we have no lacrosse in the community, trying to really just increase that practice utilization. We did a study on how much our fields are used, and we definitely need this space.
I would agree. I'm going to support this wholeheartedly. Thank you for your explanations. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Kaduk?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Williams, you mentioned it briefly about irrigation, however, if we're talking about soccer fields or football fields or any type of fields, what are we doing about drinking water for anyone trying to drink out of a water fountain on those fields?
Well, that is all being included as part of the first four fields, so we got potable water. I don't know if I can ask John to step up and talk more about the details, but we do have drinking water anticipated for the facility out there.
Okay, so the irrigation is coming from the canals, and the drinking water is coming from where?
Good afternoon, John Osterstock, Facility Project Manager. To answer your question, we extended one of the water lines that was a part of the UAP that was just to the south of this property. We extended that north to provide potable water, both for the restrooms and then some additional spigots that were put out along the fields.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kilrain?
Yeah, I just want to emphasize too, that based on it being surface water, and it's outside of the restricted zone, and the area of the mid Hawthorne that it's in, it's not a homogeneous structure. There are various parameters and ceiling mechanisms within that structure itself that allow us to use it this way without impeding or impinging upon that constraint zone. So if you want to comment on that too, Matt, might be a good idea.
Well, I think that, you know, all the aquifers generally are connected. We talk about them being disconnected, that in general, they're connected in some form or fashion. I think if we're doing our best by relying on surface water here, a reusable source of water to irrigate these fields as opposed to really a system that is not as reliable as our surface water. So this is something that I think we're doing a good service for the city by going to surface water.
Okay, thank you. And I didn't mention, when we got the taste award on that, basically, if people would recognize the water that we start with, to have a tasting that well, after all of it goes through with the RO process, we are in very good shape in the way we handle water in the city, and probably do it better than any other city that I've ever seen, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and just real quickly, for me, it looks like this change is $1,389,278.76, and we had a 5% contingency fund that council approved originally, so that's $849,046.98. So that leaves a balance of $540,233.78. Mr. Williams, can you explain where that particular dollar amount will be coming from?
Well, that is, has already been budgeted, it's in the go funds for all the parks, I believe, and Mr. City Manager might be able to explain this a little better than I, but I believe there's $12 million in the go bond park funds that has been set aside to put towards the completion of Festival, Tropicana Park, and Lake Mead, the parks that we have left. So it's already been budgeted, this is not going after any money that hasn't been budgeted already.
And I think that was the important message I was trying to get across, this is no, we're not allocating any additional funds other than what's already been allocated for Festival Park, my understanding correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's all I have. Seeing none, lights on, I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 189-25.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, Resolution 287-25, I believe Councilmember Kaduk pulled this, I'll turn the floor over to you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like our city manager to explain exactly what this is, because it looks like we're spending, you know, $428,000 on a park, however, I would like you to explain to the public exactly what we're doing and why.
Absolutely. So Veterans Park is located at Coronado, just east of Del Prado, and when we were looking at the design and concepts for the yacht club, it was determined that the tennis facilities at the yacht club were going to be removed in order to activate all of the waterfront at that park. Previously sitting council had directed staff to identify a park in District One in the Southeast that we could add or replace two of the four tennis courts that were being removed, so that anybody that were, any of the community-based functions that were happening at the yacht club were going to be relocated up to the courts, and some of those leagues have. But there were some residents who said, you know, we are not into men's or women's tennis leagues or doubles leagues, but we go there to play tennis just recreationally as a neighborhood. And so what we did was we presented an idea back to council at a COW several years ago to replace two of the four tennis courts at Veterans Park in order to make up for the loss for those residents in the Southeast, and that was approved, so then we moved forward with the design. In this contract, at that existing park now, there is a basketball court already, however, that basketball court, it just had a concrete playing surface similar to Gia Frida Park, which is up off of Pine Island Road, but when we refreshed that park, we added a outdoor playing surface to it. So when they're surfacing or installing the new tennis courts, and when they bring in the outdoor surfacing, we're going to freshen up the basketball court, as well as we're going to be adding lighting to the basketball courts and the tennis courts as well.
Thank you. And just to be clear, you mentioned it, but it was a couple years ago in a committee of the whole meeting that this was discussed and agreed upon, and just for the public to know, it takes many years for anything to come to fruition, and this is exactly what we're voting on tonight.
That is correct. In our public procurement, we have to seek design consultants, then when they're done, we have to go through the procurement process, comes to council, gets awarded, they go through the design contract, then they have to seek permits, when they get the permits, we put out a bid, that bid goes through a public procurement process, we have to wait for, we have to exhaust any bid protest timeframes, and after we complete all of that, we're able to bring you all a contract to construct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Steinke?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I remain committed to having those, if you will, athletic facilities, tennis courts, south of Cape Coral Parkway, for my, you know, concern for those District One residents that relied upon the tennis courts and what were years ago racquetball courts there at the yacht club, for them to take their lives on their hands and cross Cape Coral Parkway on their bicycles or by walking. As we look at the redevelopment of Bimini East, and if you will, the freshening of Four Freedoms Park, I will, as I was on the losing end of maintaining any of those athletic facilities there at the yacht club, I will remain committed, even though we're putting these tennis courts in at Veterans Park, that certainly serves a purpose for that neighborhood, but I still believe our yacht club community deserves to have those tennis courts, facilities like that replaced after losing them at the yacht club. So I will be in favor of this, certainly for that neighborhood that surrounds Veterans Park and those in close proximity there, but I'll remain committed to looking to see that there's something in the plan to replace those near the yacht club area. That's it, thank you.
Seeing none, lights on, I entertain a motion for Resolution 287.
Motion to approve. 287-25.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Donnell?
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to item eight, Resolution 339-25. I believe Councilmember Kaduk pulled this as well, and I'll turn the floor over to you.
I did, thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, could you please explain a little bit more about what this is, and then I have a follow-up question?
Sure, I don't know if either Public Works or my Emergency Management Director want to come discuss the contract on the CDBG DR.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Ryan Lamb, Emergency Management Resilience Director. So this facility is, as the city manager had mentioned, is funded through the Community Development Block Grant for Disaster Recovery as a result of Hurricane Ian. This is to proceed with the design services for this facility. The plan is for this to be located at Festival Park, with the symmetry within inside the park, joint parking and other resources that are going to be there. This is going to be twofold, it's going to have a what we call blue sky purpose, so when there's not a disaster, it's going to serve as a rec center, have services for low moderate income individuals, things such as childcare, youth leagues, assistance for helping gain better employment, English as a second language, CPR classes, those type of facilities there. It's also going to have space for a nonprofit to be co-located within that facility as well. And then during gray skies, during an incident, it will serve as a public shelter and have other resources afterwards serving as a disaster recovery center after disasters happen.
Awesome, thank you. And this is through grant funding, or we are taking out debt to do so?
I believe through the grant, we were able to get 29 million and change, about just under 30 million, and then the total project cost right now is estimated at 35 million, so there's a portion that'll be funded through the city.
Okay, thank you. And then in our backup materials, page 43, it's showing contract administration for 469-930. So that to me is telling me that no matter what we're going to build, is that correct? So we're just going to build whether we, you know, have the grant funding, and we're going to pick up the rest of the bill? We've already decided on that as a council? I don't know if we have, it's a question.
Yeah, so when it was previously presented to council, at that total project cost of the 29 million and then the approximately $5 million and change, that'll be coming to council, or coming funded from the city budget, that would be the anticipation. So if we have...
26 fiscal budget?
I believe that was... 27, 27, fiscal year 27, because it's going to take us a year to design the project.
Okay, and anyone from Financial Services, will we find that in the 27 budget outline?
Crystal Feast, Financial Services Director. As Ryan Lamb said, where the design will take some time, so as we start the budget process for fiscal year 27, that's going to be a discussion that we'll have in order to identify funding for the remainder. It hasn't been identified yet.
Thank you, you answered my question. That's all.
Okay, seeing none, lights on, I...
Motion to approve Resolution 339-25.
Second.
Any other council discussions? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
No.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long?
No.
Six ayes, two nays, motion carried.
If we move on to Resolution 345-25, I believe Councilmember Lastra pulled that, and I'll turn the floor over to you.
It was me.
What?
I pulled 10. Sorry, I thought you said 13.
Oh, I pulled 10. Okay.
I had heard it's 10 and you was 13, but I could be...
Okay. All right. I wanted to pull this resolution to talk about the amount, the jump in amount from 100,000 to 325,000 for face, sorry, fence maintenance, repair, and installation. I just wanted to kind of go through the explanation, I know it was due to hurricane damage that we sustained from a lot of our fences throughout the city, and I just wanted to explain this publicly and talk about the additional dollar amount and where that money is coming from. Clarify that. So...
Hello, Dame Grant Public Works. This item, this Resolution 345-25, looks to increase the fence ace contract, existing contract for fence repairs and maintenance and replacements from 100,000 to 325,000, and it's based on an upcoming anticipated list of work we have, the majority of which is we have 25 locations that represent fence repairs and replacements needed at 25 lift stations. That total is 299,828. So to answer your question, what's driving the ask for additional dollars for the fence repair is the $299,000 project that we look to get forward or get completed this fiscal year, and it's driven by our lift stations being part of our critical infrastructure. We want to protect those infrastructure, and we also have several generators that are going to be placed there, so we want to make sure that when these generators come in, we have them behind fences, and there's not going to be any damage, and they're going to be secure.
And did you say we would utilize any FEMA dollars for this?
We do have the lift station 616 FEMA dollars, it's, some FEMA dollars are in this list, there's others that we just want to make sure that we have proper secured fencing around our critical infrastructure.
Understood. Will we be able to utilize any additional FEMA funds to reimburse that?
The only FEMA funds we have right now are identified for one of those lift stations.
All right.
And that was in the amount of just under $20,000.
All right, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Seeing none, lights on, I entertain a motion for... Entertain a motion for Resolution 345-25.
Motion to approve.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to the last item, Resolution 358-25. I believe Councilmember Kaduk pulled this, and I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually pulled this again so that our city manager could explain exactly what was going on. I think it's important for the public to know that we are receiving money back, which is something that we don't often see.
Yeah, thank you. We will begin receiving, if this is approved, we would begin receiving, be eligible to receive funding in January. So it's not a retroactive payment, but it's our eligibility prospectively beginning in January.
And for people that aren't looking at the backup materials, what exactly is that?
So this is related to the sales tax that the school board passed. This, we had asked, sent letters...
sent letters, previous mayors had sent letters asking them to participate in that sales tax. We were told that by the School, Lee County School Board, no, they had no intention of doing that. And as a result of this agreement, we would be eligible to participate in those sales tax revenues to fund projects at our own municipal oasis charter school system.
Just the charter school system, or can we use it to fund sidewalks?
I believe it's the infrastructure for the schools.
A two-mile radius of all of our schools within the municipality?
At this point, I don't know that, if those would be eligible. But we can definitely look into that. And if they are, we would be, we could submit those as eligible projects.
I mean, I would really just like it to be used on our charter schools. However, if we have sidewalk needs around our actual schools and the school board's then going to give us this money, but then say we gave you money and then now you have to use that money to improve around our schools, I just want to make sure that we know that.
I understand what you're saying. So this agreement is for a pro-rata share based on the student population for our own charter school system? I think in general, what you're saying is any school throughout the city, it would be good if the school board would utilize the infrastructure sales tax to fund those. And I understand what you're saying.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Kilrain?
Yeah, and this was discussed a little bit in our charter school board meeting last night. And the intent, I think, was, we hadn't done anything since 2020. We weren't able to secure this. And this is the first year we've been able to secure it. And it was intended to be for the charter school, I think. That was what was discussed last night. Had to be used specifically for safety in the charter school. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, when you look at the backup material and you go down to the agreement, item two talks about use of funds. And there it says that the funds will be used exclusively, directly for the acquisition and construction renovation, equipping, including safety and security equipment, technology and financing of school facilities, consistent with the purpose authorized in the 2018 capital outlays surtax referendum, section 2.212.055 of the Florida statutes. I think it's very clear on what the purpose can be used for. Now, you may be able to make an argument that safety is students walk in the school. But that's what the use of funds in the agreement, how it's outlined at this time. So it'd be nice to know if sidewalks would rise to the level of safety for the students walk into school. Seeing no other lights on, I will entertain a motion for this particular resolution.
Motion to approve Resolution 358-25.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steineke?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Okay, we will move on to item 8B, appointments to boards and committees. First of which, B1 is the Audit Committee. It appears we have three vacancies and three, four, five, six, seven applicants, is that correct?
Six.
Your Honor, one of the applicants withdrew their application, Ms. Cheryl Trent. So I have six.
That's right. I see withdrawn. All right. So typically, we do give each individual that applied for our boards opportunity of one minute to introduce themselves. Is that something we still want to continue to do, I would assume?
I think so.
Yep. All right. So Madam City Clerk, if you could call up all the applicants for a one-minute introduction.
Yes, Your Honor, two applicants have indicated that they are unable to attend this evening, but are very eager to serve. That would be Pam Austin and Joel Puceteri. So the remaining four, I will call up. Travis DeSerey?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Travis DeSere, and I've been a resident of City of Cape Coral for about 35 years. I've previously served on two different boards with the city. I was the Chair for the Cape Competes Advisory Board back in 2023, as well as having sat on the Cape Coral Construction Advisor in Regulations Board prior to its dismissal and moved to the state level. Here tonight to express my interest in serving on the City Audit Committee, generally just because I do believe I have a valuable level of insight. I've worked for the last 15 years here in the city, owning multiple real estate brokerages, property management companies, and several other financially-based businesses. And I believe I have some insight that I'd be able to bring to the table and add value to this particular board. I know that there may be some people here tonight. Sounds like we have a surplus, which is a rarity, I think, for these types of boards and committees. And so if there are applicants that are better served, I'm happy to step aside for that. But looking forward to seeing this board move forward to serve the city best of our ability.
Thank you.
Jill Jacobs?
Hi, my name is Jill Jacobs. I've been a resident for about 14 years. And I have served on the Audit Committee in the past. I think my, I go back about a decade. And I have been a past Chair, past Vice Chair, took a break for a while, but now I'm back. And I just completed one term, and I'm up for another term. And I'm very interested in continuing on this committee. We're doing a lot of good work, and we have a great Audit Committee Audit Staff. And I'm very excited to keep going with this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thomas Shadrak?
Hello, Tom Shadrak. Appreciate the time today for five of you guys to talk to me. It was good, great discussion. My qualifications, I've been in the city almost eight years now, been involved a lot with the budget and questioning things. My background is 37 years at the Boeing Company, where I was a very bureaucratic company. And we have lots of procedures and processes that I was involved in auditing and performing to. So I know that this job is mainly about looking at processes and procedures, and I'm good with that. And I would like your support and would appreciate it. And I think I'm one of the better qualified compared to the actual qualifications for the job. I think I ranked very high. And I'd like you to be considered for this job, and then we'd be glad to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Stevens?
No applause.
John Stevens from Cape Coral, reapplying for the position of the Audit Committee, currently the Vice Chair. And I have extensive auditing background throughout my career, and just like to continue my service to the city. Thank you very much.
All right, that's the four that are present today.
Okay. All right. I guess what we can do is, if we like, once we get to that, I see a light on, but once we get to it, we'll go down our voting order and give the three members, since we have three vacancies, we'll give three names to fill those vacancies. Councilmember Lastra.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank everybody that applied. And Travis, when you stated we have a surplus, you're absolutely correct. We don't see that often. So I just wanted to say thank you. I'm very impressed with the new folks that have applied, their background, their demeanors. You know, Mr. Shadrak, I know you come to all of our meetings and you're very involved. I'm only one vote, but I just wanted to say thank you. You know, some of you that have been on this committee for a while, maybe it's time that we look at making a change. I think, you know, backgrounds and experience and all of that definitely weigh into my decisions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Seeing no other lights on, Madam City Clerk, could you go down the voting list?
Steineke?
Austin, DeSere, and Stevens.
Austin, DeSere, and Stevens. Donnell?
Austin, Stevens, and Chad.
Austin, Stevens, and Shadrak. Gunter?
Austin, Stevens, and DeSere.
Austin, Stevens, and DeSere. Kaduk?
Austin, Shadrak, Stevens.
Austin, Shadrak, Stevens. Kilrain?
Austin, Stevens, and DeSere.
Austin, Stevens, and DeSere. Lastra?
DeSere, Shadrak, and Stevens.
DeSere, Shadrak, and Stevens. Lehman?
Austin, DeSere, and Stevens.
Austin, DeSere, and Stevens. Long?
Austin, DeSere, and Stevens.
Austin, DeSere, and Stevens. All right, just a moment, and I'll calculate those. All right. I show that is seven for Austin, six for DeSere, three for Shadrak, and eight for Stevens.
So the three top vote recipients are Austin, Stevens, and DeSere. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
All right. And I'll entertain a motion for that.
Motion to approve those three that were presented with the highest totals.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, let's move on to the next one, Planning and Zoning Board. It appears that we have four regular positions that are open and two alternates. And one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 applicants. Is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
So we'll go ahead and do the same one-minute introduction for each one of those. And then we'll go from there.
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Sure.
We recently looked at criteria that wouldn't allow for more than two people from a particular industry. And we've, in the applications that are reviewed for all of these folks, there are some people that have multiple occupations listed. How do we make a determination of which industry that they will be considered representing as we would look at staying within those guidelines?
Madam City Clerk?
I'd like to defer that question to the city attorney.
Hot potato.
That's why it gets paid a big bucks.
So in reality, if there are multiple professions that are identified based upon the Ordinance Amendment, it could be deemed that they are in fact not within one of the identified, not within one of the identified fields. So it could be viewed that way.
And if I recall correctly, in that recent Ordinance or Resolution, it was, that was a preference.
Preferred composition of the board.
It wasn't a mandatory. Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Steineke?
Yes, thank you.
All right. I'll turn it back over to Madam City Clerk.
All right. Out of the 10, three individuals have indicated that they are unable to attend this evening, although they are very eager to serve on the board. That is Charles Langenfeld, Judith Thomas Fernandez, and Raymond Dold. Many have checked in, so I'll call the names. Donald Apking?
It was Charles Langenfeld, Judith Thomas, and Raymond Dold.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Don Apking. Appreciate the privilege of having served on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I sent out emails to all of you, so just kind of a follow-up. I'd appreciate continuing the privilege of having another term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Craig?
Good afternoon. I appreciate your time today. She said, my name is Kevin Craig. My wife and I moved here in 2017, right after Irma, moved from the Kansas City area. My background has been mostly, first part of my career was food distribution. I was, ended up running a $200 million food distribution company back in Kansas City area. Then I started my own business. I was an executive search firm, moved that firm down here, and then I retired in 2022. Since we moved here, my wife's been very active in the community, been very active with the New Residents Club. And since I've retired now, I've been looking for a way to help serve the community as well. And wanted to, this opportunity arose, so I wanted to express my interest in it. I know there's a lot of growth plans for the city and a lot of potential for conflict between commercial and residential, and looking to help be able to weigh into that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Edwin Estes?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. I want to thank you for my appointment to the Charter Review Commission. I enjoyed my service there. I regret that I wasn't allowed to come and hear the presentation to you due to a previously scheduled vacation. Unfortunately, I also missed my Planning Commission interview before the Planning Commission. My preferred member composition is land use, real estate, and other. I practiced land use law as an attorney for over 30 years. I've also served as a City Council member in California for eight years. During that time, I had the opportunity to hear appeals on zoning issues. We also updated our, what we call General Plan, you call your Comprehensive Plan, and redeveloped our downtown business district. I'm also a former judge, pro tem or temporary judge, so I do understand the importance of due process and maintaining our allegiance to the Comprehensive Plan, all 11 elements. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Renee Lemieux?
Good evening, Council. My name is Renee Lemieux. I've been part of the Planning and Zoning Board for the last six months as an alternate commissioner. I'm a registered nurse by trade. Right now, I've retired a few years ago, but I do work per diem as a home care nurse. I moved here to Cape Coral just before Hurricane Ian. I was really taken by the destruction of the, but also by the sense of community that I found during the everyone getting back together. So I decided to join some organizations to try to be more part of the community. I'm a board member on the McGregor Clinic. I'm also a part of the American Legion Auxiliary and the Moose Lodge Women of the Moose. I enjoyed my time that I had on the board for the last few months, loved investigating each of the ordinance agendas, go into the areas, see what's there, and how we can make a better impact. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dwayne Moore?
Good afternoon. Thank you for the time this given to me today. My name is Dwayne Moore. I moved here about a year and a half ago. In my prior experience, the city government, county government, state government, and federal government, last position I held was White House opportunities under revocation, which fell under Department of HUD. My responsibility was 171 socio-economic suppressed communities. And we built opportunity zones through deferred and tax for capital gain. And so we worked that department for four years under the Trump administration. Recently moved here, as I said, and just want to get involved to immerse myself and connect and just whatever I can do for my community and my city. That's what I'm here for. So again, this is a great opportunity for me. That's what I'm here for. So again, this is a great opportunity for me. We serve on the Charter Commission Review Board as well. And so got a, got a lot of information that I didn't know about the city, and it gave me an opportunity to learn a lot about what's happening and what's going on and what's in the near future. So just want to get involved and just give my talents and my abilities to make the city better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Schwartz?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Jack Schwartz. I'm a 50-year resident of Cape Coral, and I've owned and operated my electrical contracting business here for 35 years. I believe I bring a lot of experience to the planning and zoning. I am a member of the planning and zoning right now, and I would appreciate the consideration for reappointment. Thank you very much.
Daniel Severson?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Dan Severson. I've been a resident of Cape Coral for a little over 10 years now. It's been my honor to serve on the Planning and Zoning Committee for the last couple of years. My background is a former naval retired officer and legislator in the state of Minnesota, but it's been a real pleasure to be able to serve in this council and the people of the Cape on the capacity of planning and zoning, and I hope that you'll consider me for another two years. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last name for the people present.
Okay, then we'll go down the list, and I guess we'll start with maybe the four permanent positions. And then, after that, then we will discuss the alternate positions, the two alternate positions. So Council will give four names for their four people to be as a permanent voting member of the.
Thank you.
Of the Planning and Zoning.
Steinke?
Apking, Lemieux, Moore, and Severson.
Apking, Lemieux, Moore, and Severson. Donnell?
Apking, Estes, Moore, and Severson.
Apking, Estes, Moore, and Severson. Gunter?
Apking, Estes, Moore, and Severson.
Apking, Estes, Moore, and Severson. Kaduk?
Apking, Estes, Lemieux, Schwartz.
Apking, Estes, Lemieux, and Schwartz. Kilrain?
Apking, Severson, Estes, and Moore.
Apking, Severson.
No, Severson.
Severson, Estes, and Moore. Lastra?
Again, this is a hard one. We have, we have some really great applicants. Let's see. I will do Apking, Estes, Moore, and Severson.
Apking, Estes, Moore, and Severson. Lehman?
Apking, Estes, Lemieux, Severson.
Apking, Estes, Lemieux, and Severson. Long?
Apking, Estes, Moore, and Severson.
Apking, Estes, Moore, and Severson.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a moment while I calculate those. All right, so that is eight for Apking, seven for Estes, three for Lemieux, six for Moore, one for Schwartz, and seven for Severson. So the top four tally is Apking, Estes, Moore, and Severson.
Can I entertain a motion reflecting that?
Motion to approve all four as the highest vote winners in this, as.
Thank you.
Members.
Okay, no other discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried. All right, so.
So the next will be the two alternate positions?
Yes. And so out of our list, I'm eliminating the four that were just selected, and that leaves Craig, Dold, Langenfeld, Lemieux, Schwartz, and Thomas Fernandez.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to provide a little bit of clarity, the, not restriction, but the limitation as to two only pertains to the regular members, and these are the alternates.
Correct. All right, so Madam City Clerk, if you'd go down the voting order again, please, for the council to pick two names for the alternate positions.
Steinke?
Craig and Lemieux.
Craig and Lemieux. Donnell?
Lemieux and Schwartz.
Lemieux, Schwartz. Gunter?
Lemieux, Schwartz.
Lemieux, Schwartz. Kaduk?
Lemieux and Schwartz.
Lemieux, Schwartz. Kilrain?
Schwartz and Lemieux.
Schwartz and Lemieux. Lastra?
Schwartz and Lemieux.
Schwartz and Lemieux. Lehman?
Dold and Lemieux.
Dold and Lemieux. Long?
Lemieux and Langenfeld.
Lemieux and Langenfeld. All right, one moment. So that's one for Craig, one for Dold, one for Langenfeld, eight for Lemieux, and five for Schwartz. Lemieux and Schwartz are the top.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for that.
Motion to approve Schwartz and Lemieux for the alternates.
I just wanted to clarify also, because I don't think we mentioned it before, the regular members that we appointed were for two-year terms that will expire 10/31/27, and the alternate members are one-year terms, which will expire 10/31/26. I just wanted to point that out for the record.
Mayor?
Yes.
Does, does five meet the two-thirds vote required for Schwartz?
If I may, the tally is a tally, and the vote is what we're about to take.
Right, so that individual would need two-thirds vote at this point, not for the tally.
Okay.
Just for the vote. So we. Have motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long? Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, I just want to thank all the applicants tonight for, for the Audit Committee or the, for the Planning and Zoning for stepping up a willingness to serve your community. So thank you. Okay, let's move on to item 8C is unfinished business. C1 is follow-up items for council. There's none listed. Item 2 is follow-up items for city management. There's none listed there either. Item 8D is new business, first of which is Resolution 314-25, and I will turn it over to the city manager to start with. Yes, thank you. I'm going to turn this over to the local housing, Affordable Housing Committee for a presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Thomas, Senator, Vice Chair of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. The background is, in accordance with Florida Statute 4209076, the city of Cape Coral establishes the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, AHAC, to make recommendations related to the incentives that may be utilized to encourage or facilitate the development of affordable housing in the city of Cape Coral. The recommendations made by AHAC represent an attempt to remove regulatory barriers that limit the development or preservation of affordable housing or drive up housing costs. To fulfill this task, the advisory committee reviews the local government's existing policies and procedures, land development regulations, and comprehensive plan. The committee recommends specific actions or initiatives to encourage affordable housing while protecting the ability of the property to appreciate. The AHAC report identifies 11 incentive strategies and recommendations for adoption by the local government. This plan must be adopted by December 31, 2025. The first plan was adopted in 2008. The Affordable Housing Incentive Plan serves as the committee's final recommendation to the city council. We had 11 incentives required to be reviewed. We had expedited permitting, which was required, fee waivers, flexibility of density, reservation of infrastructure capacity, accelerated dwelling units, reduced parking and setback requirements, flexible lot configurations, modification of street requirements, review of policies, procedures, ordinances, resolutions for impact on housing, which was required, the triennial review of public lands, which was required, and support development near mixed-use development, transportation corridors, and employment centers. Our 2025 recommendation incentives are as follows. The report recommends maintaining the following incentives. The first was expedited permitting. We had ongoing review process, which is also required. Number C, triennial review of the locally owned and land suitable for affordable housing required under Section 166.0451 of the Florida statutes. D, reduction of the parking requirements through the administrative deviation. E, reduction of street width requirements through administrative deviation. F, allowance of flexible lot configurations through a PUD. G, the fee waiver modification of impact fees to maintain the existing single multifamily impact fee deferral programs. Number two, the 2025 report recommends modification of the existing incentive, which was A, was the auxiliary dwelling units, or ADUs, with special regulation. Number three, the 25, 2025 report recommends to exclude the following incentives, which was A, the flexible density for provision of affordable housing, B, reservation of infrastructure capacity, and C, support development near mixed-use development, transportation corridors, and employment centers. Support was not mandated. The action, number one, the ship statute does not mandate the adoption of the AHAC recommendations by the governing body of the local government other than the required incentives for expedited permitting and the ongoing process of review. The elected officials may, A, discuss the report and vote to adopt only one of the many recommendations, B, adopt all the recommendations, C, adopt some of the recommendations, or D, read the report and take no further action. Number two, if the local government does not adopt the recommendations from the AHAC, the ship statutes establish that the local government must amend its AHAC to incorporate the recommended incentive strategies that it plans to implement. The local government must provide the report to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation and the Florida Housing Coalition. Do you have any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Councilmember Kilrain.
Yeah, I'd like a definition of what expedited permitting means in this context.
Well, I would imagine that we'd like to get it done a lot quicker than it's been going on.
And what does that mean? I mean, we're talking about concrete issues here, so let's get some concrete on it.
Good evening, Councilmembers. For the record, Amy Uersley, City Planning Manager. Expedited permitting is a permitting program that we have to expedite housing that is being developed under our programs, be it the ship program, the CDBG program, any of the counting, counting programs. And basically what happens is there's a form that's filled out. It's reviewed by housing staff within the Planning Division to make sure that it meets the requirements under state law. That is then distributed to the reviewers, and those reviewers then move them up in the pile. So, and then my staff's responsible to kind of walk around and shepherd it through the process.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, with that, I would be supportive of this, but only adopting the required elements, which are three AV, as shown in their report.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lastra?
Thank you, Mayor. I obviously, I'm on this committee, and I wholeheartedly support this report. The one thing I know that may be a bit of a sticky wicket is the ADUs. So I was wondering, given the pending legislation that could be coming up to mandate these, is there any way that we could add this ADUs in specific to a future COW to have that discussion amongst all of us and, and get input? Because we may not have an option, whether or not these are coming to us or not. Would that be appropriate? Mr. City Attorney, or Mike, or Mayor, is that?
I don't make that decision, Mr. City Attorney.
Okay.
I mean, the legislation is still pending. I don't know that you want to necessarily have a conversation at this point in time without knowing the full outcome. And, and arguably speaking, since the session hasn't even started, there's a very good possibility that there may be amendments to proposed legislation which will alter the course, and, and we would be having a conversation without any finality to it.
So then, what, let's say, either it passes or it doesn't pass, either way, after that determination, would it then be appropriate to have a COW?
If it in fact passes, and then we believe that the governor will actually sign it or become self-executable, then it'd be prudent for us to have a conversation, because we may have to enact our own ordinance to regulate how it is that we're going to address this new statutory requirement.
Right, similar to, sorry, similar to what we did with outdoor camping when that came forward?
Correct, but there was a mandate for outdoor camping that we were required to do by a certain period of time. The current version of it does grant us the ability to regulate it. I don't know if that will survive or not.
Got you. Okay.
And it may even give us more authority to, to, to regulate than what exists right now. So it'd be a little bit too premature, and I wouldn't want us to waste our time.
Understood. So then we'll wait. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmembers, Steinke?
Yep, two things. One is it relates to that subject. When I was serving in the capacity you're serving in now, and Amy, you might be able to verify how we did this. We didn't necessarily approve or, or eliminate ADU regulations in the city, but we kept it on the list for further, for further and future consideration. Is that a possibility that we do that now with regard to seeing what would come out of the legislative session?
That's, that is exactly what we did the last time the report was adopted, and then we came back later, and we had a discussion at a COW regarding the ADU, so.
And would it be best to do something like that now, again, because of this, to Councilmember Lastra's point? Rather than to, rather than to approve the special regulations that have been currently.
I think the recommendation, as it reads, is that we explore ADUs with special regulations, not necessarily that it's mandating that we adopt ADUs. So just want to be clear on that.
So this, this would not accept or deny what those special regulations are, just the concept of adopting it with special regulations?
Correct, absolutely.
To be determined at a later date?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And, and then the other, the other piece was, I found just something a little confusing, and that was in 3C, when it says, "Support development near mixed-use development, transportation corridors, and employment centers." That is listed under exclude them. Then in parentheses, it says, "Support, not mandate." Is the, is the exclusion to mandate them?
The exclusion is to not mandate them, but to support them, which is consistent with what is in our Comprehensive Plan currently, which says that we support mixed-use development near transit, major employer centers, but we don't want to mandate it.
But as this is written, it says to exclude support development.
Yeah, that, yes, because we don't want to mandate it. We just want to support it. I don't know how to say it any differently. It's not, we're not trying to say every development that comes into Cape Coral that's being developed has to develop along a major corridor with transit, because we know that the transit system in Cape Coral. system in Cape Coral covers a quarter of the city. We don't have a huge number of major employment centers, so to do that, we would be creating actually more of a barrier.
I absolutely get it. Mr. City Attorney, we've talked about the words-matter piece, and the way this is written, and I'll rely upon you for your judgment on this, but it says, "The 2025 report recommended to exclude support development near mixed use." It would seem like we would want to exclude mandating it.
And where is that? I apologize.
That is on Slide number four, under recommended incentives. It's 3C, and I could see where we would want to exclude mandating development near mixed, and then in parentheses say, "continue to support."
One moment, if you would. You mean, support development near mixed-use development, transportation corridors, and employment centers, and in parentheses, "support, not mandated"?
Right, so shouldn't it be that we are excluding mandating development? And then in parentheses, say, "continue to support"?
Is this codified in the, Amy, maybe you could answer, is it codified in the, or not codified, excuse me, is it within the Affordable Housing Incentive Plan, or is this just a discussion?
This is, if I may, Mr. City Attorney, this is just the overview slides. What the actual recommendation within the actual plan says is AHAQ recommendation, usually we put support, don't support, implement, don't implement. In this case, it says, "AHAQ recommendation, do not implement," concurs that this is a challenging, it's a challenge, and recommends that the city encourages development near transportation hubs, major employment centers, and mixed-use developments, but do not mandate.
Yeah, so the slide was just A.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Yeah, I guess I'll jump in here real quick. My only concern, like Councilmember Stanky had mentioned, you know, words matter, and if you read on Slide four, the 2025 report recommends modifying the existing incentive A, allow, and I think that's a key word, allow accessory dwelling units with special regulations. The problem that I have with that wording is because if we adopt their plan, we are agreeing that we are going to allow accessory dwelling units with special regulations. That's what the words say. For me, I would be more comfortable if it said, you know, "future discussions regarding accessory dwelling units with special regulations within the City of Cape Coral." Then that'll come up as a topic of discussion at some point. If you're asking us to memorialize their plan, it says, "allow accessory dwelling units." So I'm kind of struggling with that. I understand that, you know, this year, we don't have to adopt except for what is required, and I think that's what Councilmember Kilrain had mentioned in his comments. So that's the only thing that I'm struggling with a little bit.
To clarify one more time regarding this, the actual recommendation that is within the plan that is being adopted, recommendation simply says, "revisit the topic of accessory dwelling units."
That's what's in the plan?
That's what's in the plan itself.
What page is that on, Amy?
It's on Page eight.
Thank you.
Yeah, can you put Page eight up here so we can see it? Because what I don't understand is why is Page eight saying one thing, and this slide says something totally different? That's what I don't understand.
Again, it was more of a summary, but this is the actual document itself. So as you can see, every list says what the recommendation is and what the city council action is. So after we have this meeting, if you have different wording that you want in the actual plan, we can put that actual wording within the plan before we submit it to the state of Florida.
And where is the wording that you had mentioned? This is only for a discussion. Where's that word?
It just says, "revisit the topic of accessory dwelling units."
It's in bold at the very bottom.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Kaduk.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, is there a way that we can get ahead of this if we know it's coming from the state to get grandfathered in or something to that sort?
You could certainly ask our legislative lobbyists to try to get some additional language to allow some further control. I don't know how receptive that would be, but that certainly is one option to commence that process right now.
Okay, I mean, for people that are always home rule heroes, it seems like we're just giving away more and more power all the time, so.
I mean, it's always, you know, I've been dealing with the erosion of home rule policy for probably what, the last eight or 10 years, if I'm not mistaken. It's just another, it's just another aspect of it. Certainly, our lobbyists, you know, would be the mechanism by way we do that. And then the real question is whether or not we take a more aggressive approach and act some type of ordinance that may prohibit it, and whether or not that's going to have a material impact on anything that passes in the state.
I definitely think it's worth a discussion at the Cal. If, I mean, this was brought up at the state level last year too, right? So we have no idea where it's going to go. However, I think because we know what we do know, we should try to stay ahead of it. That's why I'm asking questions. I don't feel like our lobbyists keep us up to date. I guess we're leaning on staff to do that, or us to just reach out to them and tell them what we want. So that's all, thank you.
If you would like, yeah, so the way we work with the lobbyists and anything on your legislative platform, if you would like regularly recurring updates or anytime any of those go there, just let us know, and we will make sure that you have an update on when it's going to a committee, when it's heard on the floor, we can get you any of that information.
Thank you. I mean, I said this last year, I said this specifically to Dane and to Nick. I have the text messages to prove it. I feel like every time we go to Tallahassee as a body, we are there too late. These decisions are made, we're just going just for show. So I think that's important, and quite frankly, I already asked the school board when they're going, and they're going up in December, and we're going up in January. I think that's crazy. All the decisions are made, so just wanted to say that, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other discussions, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt those required items that are in this report.
I'll second that motion.
What was the motion?
Yeah, I didn't hear it, sorry.
There are three required items in this report, and so, yeah. Three required items which are in this report, which would be my motion, to do those that are required, and then we have flexibility on all other parameters of the report.
Well, is that what Resolution 31425 says, or are we changing something?
Go to the City Attorney.
What does the resolution say?
The resolution, what it states is authorizing submission of the local housing incentive plan, which is attached to Resolution 314-25. It's for review and approval by the Florida House Finance Corporation in authorizing and directing staff to prepare the required amendments to the local housing assistance plan in accordance with the local housing incentive plan by required submission deadlines. So what you have here is the resolution that memorializes the adoption of the housing plan, which is attached and incorporated as part of this entire process.
Which outlines?
Which is Exhibit 1, correct, which identifies what it is that we're going to be doing in regards to the ship funding moving forward.
And that plan, Ben, specifically relates to only those materials that are required to be done, must be done. The others are at our discretion, future discretion. That's why I'm having trouble.
What's the question? I apologize.
The, this outline.
The plan.
Yeah, well, if this presentation included the parameters of the plan, there are only three things required by it that we should be doing. The others are discretionary, and I would like to allow them to be discretionary and only do those required things. If we want to follow those discretionary at a future time, that's great, but let's not walk into those at this point.
And that is, and that is what it is, that's identified within the plan, identifying what is mandatory, and then what is not mandatory. So that is all the recommendations that's identified in each and every of the items in the plan. So is that?
Yes.
Okay, that is all in here.
Mayor, if I could?
You done, Councilmember Kilrain?
In our backup material, where the resolution is, just beyond the resolution is the plan.
The plan, it's an exhibit to the resolution.
It's an exhibit following the actual resolution. And in there, if you'll go to the different pages, it goes through all of the strategies and what was summarized for us, and then it follows with what their recommendation is in the plan. And so, for instance, after going through all of the information on the expedited permitting process, it says that the AHAQ's recommendation is to maintain the expedited permitting process. And so for each one of those, there is the AHAQ's recommendation, and that's what we're approving, is what their recommendation is by submitting this as the plan to continue our ship funding.
That's correct. And it goes, and it starts with statutory incentives and recommendations, incentive A, and it goes on through the different incentives alphanumerically, via alphabet, and identifying what the incentive is, the synopsis, and the AHAQ recommendation, and then, of course, the city council action.
Correct, and that's where, when Amy took us to Page eight of this, where after all of the discussion around ADUs, at the very bottom, it says, "The AHAQ's recommendation is to revisit the topic of accessory dwelling units."
That's correct.
Taking no other action than that.
That's correct.
And so each one of those incentive programs has a recommendation, and if we approve Resolution 31425, it basically is acknowledging that it is okay to submit this plan, correct?
Correct.
Yes, if you approve the resolution as it stands right now, without altering the plan, you're approving what is in the plan itself, including all the recommendations from the AHAQ regarding the different incentives.
So if you, are you done, Councilmembers?
Yes, yes, thank you.
If you go to Page 14 of that plan, it gives you a summary incentive metrics, a summary A through K on those topics. And some of them were just maintaining. There were C and D, do not implement, E, which was the affordable accessory residential units and residential zones, that says revisit the topic of accessory dwelling units. And then, maintain the existing parking deviations, maintain through the PUD, maintain, 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 and then the last one, K, do not implement. So I guess that would be considered a summary sheet of pretty much what the recommendations of the plan.
Of all the different incentives from A through K.
And if I may, Mayor, just so everyone knows, this is maintaining status quo. This is exactly the same as what was adopted last year. It would not say we're going to go back and we're going to look at fee waivers again and things like that. It's saying, we're just going to keep our single-family impact fee deferral and our multifamily program and things like that. It's very specific.
In my understanding, statutorily, we have to, we have to adopt a plan each and every year if we still want to continue to get the ship funded.
We have to, statutorily, we have to do this exercise every year. However, and we do have to maintain certain incentives, however, the city council does not have to take action on it. They can choose to.
Okay, Councilmember Kilrain?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and modify my motion to include adoption of their plan as recommended.
And the second agrees. Seeing no other discussion, Madam City Clerk, we have a motion second on the floor. Could you please call the roll?
Steinkie?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Laster?
Aye.
Lehman?
Long?
Aye.
Eight Eyes Motion Period.
Okay, next one is Resolution 331-25, and it's regarding construction contracts for North One East Utility Expansion Program, and I will turn this over to staff.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Bill Corby, Public Works. I just want to provide a short introduction to let you know that this presentation you're about to see does cover the next three items on the agenda, so that is Resolution 331-25, 332-25, and 333-25. These are the construction contracts for the North One East UEP. With that being said, I'll pass it over to Bud Creighton, our Design and Construction Manager. Thank you.
Good afternoon. So Contracts 7 through 10 would be considered lineal projects. They are going to be our water, potable water irrigation sewer, and some lift stations. And Southwest Utility Systems was the successful bidder for two of those contracts. Guyman is successful for one, and Denko successful for another. The Master Pump Station, MPS 725, Southwest Utility Systems was also the successful bidder for that project, and that has a max pumping rate of about 3,600 gallons per minute, and that has a contract duration of 485 days. Back to Contracts 7 through 10, those projects will have a duration of 720 days. Here we see the, these are the results from our bids. The only caveat to that is for Contract 11. Contract 11 is estimated. We just today had the 90% document review meeting to go over comments with our consultant engineer, and our goal is to provide documents to procurement by December 31st. The total here of 175, 175 million compares to North One West, in that North One West had six contracts in MPS, and their cost was 211 million. This is just a representation of geographically where these different contracts are located here in the Cape, with Master Pump Station 725 being located in Contract 10. Along with this, we will also need to award Construction Engineering Inspection Services. We have received a proposal from TETRA. They started the design of the North One East UEP back in 2020. They have completed all design and bidding as of October 2025, with the exception of Contract 11. As part of their Construction Engineering Inspection Services, we're going to receive a full-time inspector for the Northeast 24th Avenue road widening, as long as dedicated inspectors for each construction area. Two other important components are a public information officer and also a consultant to monitor grants, to make sure we meet all the requirements for federal funding such as Davis Bacon wages. So staff at this time is requesting approval of Resolutions 331 through 333-25. Contracts 7 through 10, we asked for an average 5% contingency across those contracts, with an individual contract being able to go up to 7%. And for Master Pump Station 725, we would ask for 5%. Finally, the CE&amp;I Construction Services to be awarded for an amount of $13.3 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Bud. At this time, I did want to point out something as written in Resolution 331- Thank you, Bud. At this time, I did want to point out something, uh, as written in resolution three thirty-one dash twenty-five. It does stipulate a cumulative seven percent contingency for all of the pipeline contracts. However, this is a maximum five percent contingency, uh, with a seven percent maximum per contract. However, that shall not be cumulative. The cumulative shall be kept at the five percent for the entire project. Uh, as such, staff is requesting, uh, that, uh, a council member make a motion to modify the resolution and, uh, include that in your approval if you should choose to do so. Thank you. We're here to answer any questions. We also have our engineer of record and CEI, uh, in attendance. If you should have any in-depth questions regarding the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we will do, uh, I know they did the presentations, uh, as a group. Uh, but we'll do each resolution, uh, as far as a motion in a second, uh, when we go through the process here. So with that, uh, I'll open up for any council discussion or I will, um, entertain a motion for resolution three thirty-one dash twenty-five.
Motion to approve resolution three three-one dash two-five.
Is there a second? Then I'll open up for.
Second.
Got a second? Okay. And, uh, Councilmember Killrain?
Yeah, uh, I had a conversation with, with Bill and others earlier. The way that the resolution is written, as, as Bill mentioned, uh, it actually, uh, could be interpreted as being a compounding of the contingencies such that the total contingency might be perceived as twelve. And the fact that we're upfront discussing a seven percent for the contractors, uh, I'd like, maybe you could comment as to how we present that to the contractors at the end of the game versus in the beginning of the game, uh, because they have a not-to-exceed bid and the contingency is meant to cover any change order requirements, and that is capped at five percent. The administrative cumulative is only five percent. And if one, uh, if the seven percents approach and or, uh, attain that five percent, it's stopped there and you would have to come back to council for an approval for the rest of the fund. So we'll have to modify the resolution to reflect that because it doesn't necessarily reflect that in words, I don't think, right now.
Yes, sir, that is correct. Going over seven percent on any individual contract will require coming back to council for approval, as will going any, uh, higher than five percent cumulatively. Uh, so with that being said, hypothetically, if you were to exhaust that seven percent on the first few contracts, uh, you would hit that five percent and that last contract would, of course, uh, sacrifice that, that money until we came back to council and received that approval. So we could not spend more than that seven percent with the modified resolution, nor could we spend more than that five percent without coming back to council per that modified resolution.
Okay. So, but right now, the way that the resolution reads, it, it could be interpreted such that it could be cumulative. So we actually need a modification. So I'd have to ask for, uh, the resolution maker to, uh, see if he would modify that to, uh, preferred language to make sure that it is capped at the five percent.
So it's really an approval of resolution three three-one dash twenty-five with a modification of the contingency amount to state that beyond the seven percent contingency of the contract amount for each contract area, there shall be a maximum contingency amount based on totality of the four contracts, uh, combined together.
A five percent.
A five percent, right.
Does the motion maker agree?
I agree.
And the second?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. All right. Seeing no, no other lights on, uh, we have a motion in a second on the floor, uh, for resolution three thirty-one dash twenty-five. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Killrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman? Long?
Aye.
Eight Eyes, motion carried.
Okay, the next is resolution three thirty-two dash twenty-five. My understanding, staff has already incorporated, uh, their presentation, uh, in the previous, uh, presentation. Uh, so there's no other staff comments. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Bill Corbett Public Works, uh, the last presentation did cover three thirty-two dash twenty-five. This is for the approval of the construction of master pump station seven twenty-five. And no modification needed. Five percent contingency is what is applied to this project. Uh, and this is, uh, master pump station. Yes, sir. Standing by for any questions.
Motion to approve resolution three thirty-two dash twenty-five.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Killrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman? Long?
Aye.
Eight Eyes, motion carried.
Okay, the next one's resolution, uh, three three-three dash twenty-five. Uh, again, this, uh, presentation, uh, this particular, uh, resolution was already incorporated in the original presentation, but I will give staff opportunity for any other comments.
Yes, sir. Bill Corbett Public Works, this is for the approval of our construction engineering inspection services, uh, to be conducted by Tetra Tech, who is also our engineer of record here to answer any questions you might have.
Motion to approve resolution three thirty-three dash twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, any other council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, we have a motion second on the floor. Please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Killrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight Eyes, motion carried.
Okay, uh, resolution three thirty-four dash twenty-five. It looks like this particular resolution is involving US forty-one Northeast Reservoir Pump Station Transmission Main Project. So I will turn that over to staff, uh, for the presentation.
Good evening. Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. Uh, I've got a short presentation. I'll be brief. This project involves the phase one of the Northeast Reservoir Project. Back in twenty seventeen was the first year that we began pumping water from the Northeast Reservoir, uh, also known as Southwest Aggregates, uh, mine into the US forty-one, uh, swells. Um, subsequently, we obtained a twenty-year water use permit from the Southwest Florida Water Management District in two thousand, twenty twenty. Uh, we've been pumping water from this reservoir during the dry seasons in twenty seventeen, twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-five. Recently, uh, on May twentieth, the city closed on the purchase of the Northeast Reservoir. Uh, we also completed the engineering design and permitting, uh, this past April. The site itself consists of approximately one thousand two hundred and two acres with five hundred and seventy of those acres that have been mined and are being used as a freshwater reservoir. The site itself can hold approximately one and a half billion gallons of stormwater, uh, with the potential to store more water from the Cecil Webb Babcock area that would be phase two in the future. We're currently, um, working on permitting and working with a number of agencies, including the Fish and Wildlife Commission, um, the Charlotte Flatwoods Initiative, South Florida Water Management District, Southwest Florida Water Management District, and a number of other stakeholders to obtain additional water. Uh, the Fish and Wildlife Commission has plans to build, uh, the Bond Reservoir, which is, uh, northeast of this current site to store water. Uh, because the, uh, Flatwood pines and the wildlife have left the area. It basically gets flooded, uh, and the water has nowhere to go, and they want to drain it off, uh, to help the ecology and the environment in that area. Uh, so this project has a number of environmental benefits. Basically, it's going to solve three environmental issues. One is, um, the, the Flatwoods area, uh, being, uh, drained off, uh, to support the wildlife and the, uh, the, uh, environment there. Also, they want to bring water from that area to, um, Yucca Pines, which is too dry. Uh, and then the third benefit is to bring more water into the city's freshwater canal system, uh, during the dry season. Uh, this project essentially doubles the amount of dry season water storage in our freshwater canal system. And it's also, uh, it's absolutely required to continue the UEP irrigation system expansions. Uh, here's just a brief, uh, breakdown of the grant funding that we've received since twenty nineteen. We've received, um, except for the six million, we're waiting on that grant agreement, um, in twenty twenty-five, uh, the Florida budget. So, uh, as soon as we get that, I'll be bringing that to council. But it totals, uh, over thirteen point six million, uh, that's been earmarked for this project from the state of Florida. Uh, they really like the project. They think it has a number of great environmental benefits for our area. The reservoir cost was, um, a little over, uh, thirty-eight million. Uh, the low bid, uh, for the pipeline and pump station, which is before you, is twenty-nine million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and four dollars. And of course, we've had some, uh, soft costs, engineering costs, um, CEI costs, we'll have CEI costs, um, and some engineering design and permitting for the reservoir storage enhancement, which is phase two. That totals, uh, a little over seventy-one million to date. Uh, resolution three thirty-four dash twenty-five, uh, we're essentially requesting council approval toward the invitation to bid to Oscar Renda Contracting for the US forty-one Reservoir Pump Station and Transmission Project with a one percent contingency in the amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and four cents for a total of thirty million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, ninety-five dollars and four cents. The solic, the solicitation closed on September tenth. We had, uh, seven bids. And this project will be completed in five hundred and forty-five days or essentially around August of twenty twenty-seven. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I will entertain a, a motion for resolution three three-four dash twenty-five, and then I'll open it up for, uh, discussion.
Motion to approve resolution three three-four dash twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Donnell.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Pierce, could you go back to slide number four? On slide number, um, slide number four right there, if I'm looking at the line, it's the last line down there about the grant. It says LP eight zero two five nine, where it talks about the six million dollars.
Yes, sir.
And the end of it, it says it has not, we're waiting on the agreement. All right. The way it's pitched right here, it would, you would assume looking at it, that it's already there. So am I to, um, conclude that it's just a procedural part? We actually are going to get the dollars? Because I would hate to put it out there, we get it and then something happens and we don't get it.
Yes, sir. Uh, the grant has been approved in the budget. It's just a matter of getting the actual agreement and then bringing it to council.
Okay. The last question, I know you mentioned, uh, on, on the same slide, but dovetail to slide five. You have down here, um, a low bid somewhere else. So you can go to the next slide, please, sir. I think it was five. I think you said something about a low bid or something. Where was that? Go back to the one that said low bid was twenty-nine, maybe it was.
This one?
Yeah, okay. I just want to put it out there. We start, again, I won't make any assumptions, but we're spending this type of money. Low bid might not always be the best bid for this type of a project. So do we have? I, when I read it, I'm like, okay, whatever the lowest bid is, that's what we're going to go with. Um, I just need a, some type of assurance that it's just not okay, low bid and you're in because I come from the school you get from, you pay for.
Um, actually, there were two or three other bids that were close to the low bid, uh, but more. So it, we didn't feel that it was an unbalanced bid. Uh, there were a couple of outliers that were extremely high, uh, in excess of forty million. So we, we looked at it, uh, our engineering firm looked at it, and we all believed that the bid, it was a good bid. It, it wasn't, you know, um, you know, unbalanced, if you will. And also, we looked at the, um, Oscar Renda's, um, resume, if you will. And as far as we can tell, they do good work.
So in conclusion, it wasn't a matter of, it would take the outliers out. It wasn't a matter that, that, I hear you said there were two that were close. So the discerning factor wasn't the fact where the clothes were because they're small, they're, they're lower. We just took them. What I'm hearing you say is, no, you did some further evaluation of it, understanding, yes, it was a little bit, but they were the best suited for the project. Is that a fair statement to take away?
Um, you know, I think every one of them are capable of doing the project, all, uh, six or seven that we got, the bids. But, uh, we felt like that it was the best value for the city and our ratepayers to go with this company. They haven't done work here, so, you know, I think, um, you know, this is going to be their chance to show us how good of a contractor that they are. And, um, but from, you know, all of their references and everything that we looked at, um, they're a good contractor. And so, uh, we wanted to go with a low bid because it's a very expensive project.
Certainly. And you, what you hit me with is it was the best value for the dollar, for our residents. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Pierce. That's all.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Killrain?
Yeah, have we identified the CEI yet for this?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, it's about four hundred thousand. We already have that in our contract with, uh, Southwest Engineering and Design out of Punta Gorda. So that's already, uh, was approved by council some time ago, um, for the design and through construction services, which is an excellent value. Because if we were to go out for CEI, I would anticipate that it would probably be two or three times higher than what we're getting this for.
I thought it was low, so that's, that's why I was asking. And just to, to, uh, a comment for, uh, a council member, uh, Donnell. It, it's, it's a pump project and it's really not all that sophisticated from an engineering standpoint. I mean, all, all jobs have to have a certain precision and capability. But these guys are at risk for this, this to deliver right for this price. It's an at-risk bid. They.
No, it's, it's not a, uh, construction manager at risk. It was design bid build. But of course, th- there's contractual obligations where they have to.
Perform.
Do it for this amount.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Steinke?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make mention and, uh, thank you for all the work that you've done on this. We've, uh, you know, the, the water issues that we've got that this solves are not a secret to anyone. And, uh, and it's a lot of money, um, for anybody. Uh, although the alternative is, we went through our options a couple of years ago. We're seven times that amount. And, and so, uh, so I'm, I'm happy to see this come to fruition. Uh, it'll be great once that's up and running, keep our freshwater canals filled during the dry season and, and add to the supply that we have, you know, when, when we need it most, when it's not coming from the sky. So I'm happy to see this go through. I'm fully supportive of it.
Thank you, absolutely. And this also diversifies our water supply. Uh, we're not just all pulling it all out of groundwater. And so this diversifying that water supply is a very good thing for Cape Coral because it also promotes resiliency and, um, and it'll help us get through those dry seasons, you know, that could basically, you know, if we didn't do this, the canals are going to get so low that canal pump stations aren't going to pump. The key to reliability in this irrigation system is keeping those canals full. And this helps us to do that dirt, when it doesn't rain.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Kaduk?
Thank you, Mayor. I had my light on and, uh, Councilmember Donnell kind of nailed it for me. I get concerned when we're spending upwards to thirty million dollars. And when you look at the bids, I mean, the highest bid came in at fifty-six million dollars. So I would think that we would end up going with the middle of the road. It's just concerning that we just picked the lowest bid. And we've never, you said it, that we've never done work with this company before. So I just imagine that there's going to be. So I just imagine that there's going to be change orders coming in, in the future.
Hello, this is Wanda Rupert, human manager. I just want to, in reference to lowest bid, we tend to say low bid, but what is meant to say is lowest responsive, responsible bidder. By state statute, once a bid is issued, we have to award to the lowest responsive, responsible. Have they submitted all the documents? Is all the information available that we requested? Then we look at, are they financially, financially stable? Have they done this work before? We have included other additional items in bid documents that says, how's the performance? Have we had any issues with them? So all of that is taken into consideration, but normally the mid is more of a, like a best value perspective, and right now, state statute pretty much says lowest responsible, responsive, responsible bidder.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure that...
And you mentioned it, but we've never done work with them. So when you're going through and you're vetting the candidates, have you looked to see if they have any lawsuits on them and what that...
We, we have a business qualification questionnaire, and they have to respond to lawsuit, OSHA-related lawsuits, as well as any other lawsuits, and then that's vetted out. We do have an engineering firm that reviewed it, review references, because sometimes when, you know, someone said there's a lawsuit, there's more into the lawsuit. It could be because of timing, it could be because of performance, it could be about many different things. So all of that is taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Especially when we haven't worked with a company before.
That was my main concern. We've never worked with them. We're spending 30 million dollars with them, and again, I just imagine us having change orders in the future. I, I just, when you have such a wide range of bids come in, and we have to pick per state statute, the lowest, it's kind of concerning.
And whenever the range is large, something that Jeff alluded to, one of the things that they look at are unbalanced bids. Sometime they'll put pricing on a specific item. From a unit price perspective, it's really high, but other items are low, ultimately it looks low, but if you need to do a change order, just end up paying more. So they vet all that out as well. There's a lot of different components that have to be looked at.
And if we look at the change orders, we might be the middle-of-the-road bidder.
Yep. The first thing we need to follow, like I mentioned, is state statute. If they're responsive and responsible, if they meet those criterias, that's who the award has to go to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other light on, we have a motion for approval in a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinkie?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Long?
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item nine, is ordinances and resolutions. Nine A is quasi-judicial hearings. We do not have any of those listed tonight. Item nine B is legislative public hearings. During public hearings, city staff has five minutes for their presentation. The applicant or their representatives also has five minutes for a presentation, and we will allow any, public input will be limited to three minutes per individual with a maximum of 60 minutes. The first legislative hearing is ordinance 51-25. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 51-25, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the land development code of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, Article Three, Development Review, Chapter One, Development Review Procedures, Sections 3.1.2 and 3.1.3. Amending the land development code of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, Article Ten, Subdivisions, Chapter One, Subdivisions, Sections 10.1.3, 10.1.5, and 10.1.6, regarding administrative approval of Platts, providing for severability and an effective date.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening. Greg Harder, Land Development Manager for the city. I'll be brief. In June, the governor signed SB 784 with an effective date of July 1st. This bill made changes to state statute to simplify the Platts approval process. It required cities and municipalities, municipalities and counties to designate an administrative path for Platts approval. To be compliant with these new rules, Land Development is proposing and recommending changes to Articles Three and Ten of our Land Development Code to change final Platts approval from a council action to an administrative action under the authority of the Development Services Director. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open up, since this is a, the applicant was the city on this particular initiative, I'll move on and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 51-25, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance 51-25?
Motion to approve ordinance 51-25.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinkie?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 55-25. Madam City Clerk, please read the title and set the second and final public hearing.
I apologize, Your Honor. Your script may, must be outdated. This is the second and final.
Yeah, that's what I said. Read the title for the second and final public hearing.
Thank you. Ordinance 55-25, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the land development code of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, Article Four, Zoning Districts, Chapter One, General Provisions, Section 4.1.6, Uses by Zoning District, Use Hierarchy, amending the land development code of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, Article Four, Zoning Districts, Chapter Two, Specific Regulations by District, Section 4.2.14, Mixed Use Seven Islands District, amending the land development code of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, Article 11, Definitions, Chapter One, General Provisions, Section 11.2, Definitions, Regarding Permitted Uses in the MX-7 Mixed Use District, Providing for Severability and an Effective Date.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to staff.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor. City Council, for the record, Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the Cities Planning Division. This is the second hearing for these changes. There are changes to the use table within the LDC. I gave a presentation at the city council hearing two weeks ago. I can give that presentation again, but you've already heard it once, and at that time, there was no questions. So I'm here for further questions, and if you'd like the presentation, I can also give that again as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open up the second and final public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 55-25, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance 55-25?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve ordinance 55-25.
Second.
Second.
All right, heard a second and a third. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinkie?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Kilrain?
Aye.
Lastra?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 55, I'm sorry, 56-25. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 56-25, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the land development code of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, Article Five, Development Standards, Chapter One, General Requirements for All Development, Section 5.1.8, Sidewalks, Alley's, and Other Right-of-Way Improvements, Regarding the Institutional Zoning District, Providing for Severability and an Effective Date.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, for the record, Mike Strube, Planning Team Coordinator with the Planning Division. Ordinance 56-25 will amend Section 518 of the Land Development Code, which pertains to off-site improvements. This amendment will allow developers of institutional zone sites to seek relief from mandatory off-site requirements. Just a brief bit of background on off-site improvements. Off-site improvements are improvements that are constructed by, by developers at the developer's expense in the city right-of-way. And these types of improvements are required for new development in non-residential and mixed-use zoning districts, but they are not mandatory when sites are developed on residential zone parcels. And these types of improvements include things like curb, gutter, sidewalk. More uncommonly, it would include the improvement of alleys, turn lanes, and in some instances, even streetlights. Now, this regulatory flexibility would be limited to properties with institutional zoning. There are roughly 50 odd sites in the city with institutional zoning, and the city owns approximately half of them. And those sites tend to be very large compared to other sites represented in other zoning classifications. Uses that are allowed in the institutional zoning district include a variety of governmental uses, things like police stations, fire stations, water treatment plants, libraries. Also allowed are uses that include schools and religious institutions. And a fairly large number of these sites are located either in residential areas or are adjacent to properties with residential zoning. Now, when commercial sites are developed, off-site improvements made by a developer will, will connect to similar improvements made by adjacent owners over time. So you'll get a uniform set of improvements along the length of a block. However, when institutional zone sites are next to residential parcels, off-site improvements constructed along the frontage of the institutional site may be isolated with little likelihood of connecting to similar off-site improvements in the future. This particular ordinance provides where warranted regulatory flexibility to owners of sites with institutional zoning regarding mandatory off-site improvements, subject to site-specific review and approval by the Development Services Director. There are several standards here that are identified in the ordinance that the director can take into consideration. I'm not going to go over each one individually, but certainly would, would be glad to respond any questions you might have. We are recommending approval of ordinance 56-25. The Planning and Zoning Commission did consider this ordinance, and they recommended approval at their October meeting. We've received no correspondence, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. The, since this is a, a city-initiated ordinance, we don't have an applicant or the applicant is the city, so we'll move on to, I'll now open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 56-25, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance 56-25?
Motion to approve.
I'll open it up for discussion. Councilmember Steinkie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question on, on your slide, it's not numbered, but it says at the top, approval process and considerations. It says allows developers to request a waiver required off-site improvements. So, but what I would think about most developers is they would request the waiver. It would save them money. The waivers can be approved by the Development Services Director. Do those ever come to us for approval or not? Or is that simply approved internally?
This would, would be administrative relief that would be granted, and those requests would not come to you. They could be approved at the discretion of the director.
And, and when those occur next to residential areas, you said that they would most likely, in the previous slide, it said that they would most likely not connect with similar improvements in the future.
Correct.
Can you give me an example, maybe, of where that would be true and how it might impact those residents?
Couple of examples. So if you're familiar with the animal shelter site owned by the city, has institutional zoning, it has properties north and to the south of it that are zoned, single-family residential. So that project right now, coincidentally, is going through permitting. There are not off-site improvements on that site. Our current regulations mandate that those off-site improvements be constructed, which in this case would include curb, gutter, and sidewalk. And so, once those, without this type of relief, once those improvements were made, those improvements more than likely would be isolated unless those sites to the north and south, which lack those improvements, were rezoned in the future and then were redeveloped. And I could give you other examples. The North RL Plan is also an example, too, where city project where there are local streets as, as well as some major roads with frontage on that site. And certainly in regards to those local streets where there are, where there are residential zone properties, we would not have an expectation of any mandatory requirements made by the city linking up to similar improvements made on those residential zone sites in the future.
Okay, and while, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it, what would be a reason why, since it's being done administratively, what would be a reason why it would not be approved when that waiver was requested?
Well, there's a, a variety of factors here. So for example, if, if the institutional site was a library, that would generate a lot of foot traffic. Good chance that it, it may, that request may not be approved. The request might not even be made in the first place. Again, of the 50-some institutional zone sites that we have, half are owned by the city. But in addition to that, if there was a site that had frontage along a major road, particularly in arterial, I would think that the city would want those off-site improvements made along a road like Del Prado, because we want sidewalks along our major roads, even if there is a request for, for that being waived.
Those are great examples. Thank you, that helps a lot.
All right, Councilmember Donnell?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, city manager, last week, this, this is a continuing theme here. If I'm capturing council correctly, the fact that if there's some deviations and variances, and by no means are we trying to be micromanagers, but perhaps an idea when you have those, you could capture some type of a summary for us, just to kind of keep us in the loop, maybe quarterly or something. Because again, this, it's not a personal thing, it's just, okay, want to make sure we're consistent and gives us a level of comfort so we can communicate to our constituents. Am I kind of capturing this from what we talked about last week, also about having people out there that approving things that don't come to council? So that was just an idea to think about that would be helpful to us. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Just real quickly for me, if I read this correctly, if it's a institutional district or zoning, then they do not have to comply with some of the requirements that our commercial development does, like you mentioned sidewalks, streetlights, those sorts of things. Is that, is that how I understand this?
If the request was approved by the director, and one other thing I want to mention, too, is that we have a, there's a variety of different off-site improvements, and I tried to capture sort of the suite of, of typical off-site improvements you might see with a property. So the developer may decide that a waiver is appropriate for curb and gutter, but not sidewalks. Or the director may decide that a waiver is appropriate along a local street, but not along a major road if the street has frontage on two streets. So this could unfold in a lot of different ways. It's not a yes or no, black and white type of situation. Again, you want to look at the totality of the various characteristics that come into play with these individual sites, I believe. That's the idea.
Yeah, I know this is a very complex discussion, but really what you're asking council to do is give the authority to staff to make a deviation, but there's really no criteria... criteria that's been afforded to us, how that deviation will go, how that process will go, what will be under consideration. So, you know, it kind of puts us in an awkward position, or at least me.
Mayor, there actually is. There's, in determining whether to waive any required right-of-way improvement, the director shall consider the following, it's items A through F.
And those are the process here?
That's what he's required to consider.
Let me ask you a question. Like, I know one of the, one of the things with schools, institutional.
Yeah, it's whether the site is within a walking distance of a half a mile from a public school, public park, or shopping center. That's C. Is that up there?
Yeah.
So these are the things that are required to be considered by the director. I don't know if that helps you in your.
Yeah. And I guess he or she, today it's he, but they would have to take all of those six or seven elements into consideration first, make sure that they fit those guidelines before that deviation would really even be under consideration.
It's a narrowly tailored, the narrowly tailored ability for them to deviate in considering these six criteria.
All right. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, and that was a good discussion. So first of all, this is not creating a blanket exemption at all. This is saying, for all the properties in the city, only those that are zoned industrial may now have the ability, institutional, may now have the ability to ask for this. But in order for that to even happen, you have to be away from a school, a park, a shopping center, a major street. So we've, you narrow, you narrow down 99.9% of the properties to just those that are institutional. And then, it has to be a permissive, it's a request, not an automatic exemption. And then, when that's done, we do the criteria to determine, does it, does it fit, does it warrant, based on, if you all approve this, it has to fit outside of these criteria.
And it sounds like what Mr. Struves said, that this will be site-specific, so some things may be, maybe, a deviation may be granted, but some of those items may not. Just depends on the site-specific conditions.
Right. And so, for example, around a school, we may say, we want the sidewalks and we want the streetlights, but no need for a curb and gutter if that school is back up in a neighborhood, because then you would have in the middle of a neighborhood, curb and gutter to nowhere.
Right.
So this allows us for the institutional properties to fit the character of the neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah.
Seeing, Councilmember Lehman.
Yeah. I see the point that the school and the park are institutionalized, are an institutional situation, but a shopping center?
No, that is not, this is the criteria that staff would look at when reviewing an institutional development, if they are asking for a deviation from the design standard that's currently in place. So if they're within, if they're near a shopping center, then likely there's going to be a connection between pedestrians, and so we would be looking at that. And so that's, this is not.
Then that wouldn't be waived.
Correct.
At a shopping center. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no lights on, we have a motion second on the floor, I believe.
We have a motion to approve Ordinance 56-25 in a second.
All right. And call the roll, please.
Steinkie?
Aye.
Donnell?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Kaduk?
Aye.
Hillrain?
Aye.
Lastro?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Ordinance 57-25. This is a resolution that I will turn over to staff to start with. And I believe this is a amendment for a future land use map for multifamily to downtown mixed land use. So I'll turn it over to staff. Oh, did I skip one?
I will just, I'm going to read the title.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got, I was, I got to reading it myself, sorry. Read the title, please.
Ordinance 57-25. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from multifamily to downtown mixed land use for property described as lots nine, 10, and 11, block 350, unit seven, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at 1620 Southeast 46th Street, providing for severability and an effective date.
And I have to say, you said it much better than I did. But I will turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. City Council, for the record, Anthony Santora, Senior Planner, Development Services. My credentials are on file with the City Clerk's Office. I'm here today to talk about Ordinance 57-25. This is a privately initiated future land use, which was initiated by the property owner. This is for a property addressed as 1620 Southeast 46th Street. This is within the CRA district in southeast Cape Coral. It's a property that is just under 18,000 square feet, or roughly .41 acres. They are asking an amendment from the multifamily to the downtown mixed future land use classification. A little bit of background, it is located along a local roadway, which is southeast 46th Street, which we will see in the aerial. The site is currently developed with a single-family dwelling. It does have access to all utilities, including water, sewer, and irrigation. On the future land use history of the property, it has always been multifamily since the implementation in 89. The zoning has remained the multifamily, first at the R3 district, and then when the R3 district was done away with and replaced, it became the RML district. The applicant's LOI states that they will be requesting a zoning change, and then prepare the property for future development. I do want to state that if the approval for the future land use is granted by council, a zoning change is not necessary, as the RML district is permitted. But again, the applicant's LOI does state that they will be seeking it. So here we can see in aerial, the property highlighted in red, identified as the subject property. You can see Del Prado here to the west, and then the Canalway to the south. So the request is to take the existing property right here, which is currently designated multifamily, and to amend that to the downtown mixed. And we can see here in the classification for a future land use, the downtown mixed currently exists to the west, to the north, and then partially to the south, with across the way being the multifamily classification. To the direct east of this property exists a multifamily building on a multifamily classification, and then to the far east exists a single-family residential neighborhood. If you can look at the area, what you will see is that to the north, the properties are developed with a mix of multifamily and commercial properties. To the west, you can see along Del Prado, commercial properties. To the immediate west, a single-family residential unit and a duplex that exists directly there. And then to the immediate east, you can see a multifamily development, and then to the far east, develop that with single family. The CRA boundary exists right along this, the west side of Orchid Boulevard, comes down to the Canalway, and then across. So the request is to take that piece to the downtown mixed, as you can see, indicated, further extending the downtown mix a little bit farther down the southeast 46th Street, and conjoining it with the three properties to the west. For the current zoning classification, you can see the RML district occupies this property, again, as the applicant's intent through their LOI to submit for a rezone, but that would not be necessary if approved. So staff analyzed this as the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 3.5.2 C, criteria one through six, and found it to be consistent with all five criteria listed, with the six being criteria dependent upon council's input. Staff also analyzed this in response to C1, which is comprehensive plan analysis, and found the request consistent with three elements of our comprehensive plan, those being policy 1.15, policy 2.1, and policy 16.7. Staff also analyzed the potential impacts and denoted an increase in the potential impacts for this. Now, staff did want to highlight, as you can see in the staff report, the analysis was conducted at the four FAR, which is the maximum build-out possibilities. However, as specified in the staff report, typical development occurs at roughly .25 to .30 for average developments throughout the city of Cape Coral. We also utilize the most intensive use, which is commercial, for most of these. So, commercial obviously is something that contains a large requirement for elements, and so that is part of the numbers you see. Fire and police both indicated minor and low impacts. So city staff is seeking, recommending approval. This was heard at the October 22nd meeting of P&amp;Z, where it was recommended for approval. One gentleman did speak there. I did not oppose it, but he did have concerns regarding traffic and scale issues with potential development. Prior to the hearing, staff did receive a letter of opposition, and that was transmitted to council. So with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you. And I will give the applicant or their representative the opportunity to come forward for a five-minute presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Scott Hertz, I'm a half of the applicant for this matter. Some of my slides are duplicative, and I'll move through those quickly. And we certainly will be here afterwards to answer any questions you may have, or any questions that arise from public input. I understand that some of the neighboring properties, if you will, down the street outside of the CRA have some objections to this change, and I think that is primarily based on a misunderstanding of what's actually possible to build there. So, we were talking about this future land use change, and the, you folks in your capacities as CRA just recently granted demolition grants for these properties, that demolition has started, so the single-family homes there are currently in the process of being demolished, and, you know, within another week or so will not be there, there will be two vacant lots. And then, the goal is to, in the future, seek the South Cape zoning. One property already has the South Cape zoning, the adjacent property, and so the goal would be then to promote assemblage for a developer to come in and purchase those properties and build something. Same slides that you just looked at, in the future land use, and as you saw in the aerial, as you look north, it is all downtown mixed and then multifamily. And the concerns that were raised is that there will be some traffic issues. It's certainly not possible to predict that at this time, not knowing what's going to be built. But I'll show you some examples of what could be built. When you look directly across the street, there's a two-story mixed-use building. That's the type of thing that you could fit on this lot, which you could not do. And I'll represent to you, not only as an attorney, but as a licensed general contractor who built many developments here in this city, you can't build a six-story condominium building on these lots. You just physically can't meet the requirements for the internal circulation, the parking requirements, the stormwater requirements, the trash collection requirements. You can't meet all of those requirements on a lot of this size. And these are waterfront lots. You have setback issues as well from the rear of the property that also mitigates to what you can build on it. So I think the fear was from the slide that was shown about what the maximum possible commercial density was, created consternation. But you can't physically build the maximum theoretical possibility, sort of like if you take your car on the Autobahn, there is no speed limit, but that doesn't mean your car will do 180 miles an hour if you don't have a Lamborghini. And I think that's some of the concern here, is that the fear of the super, super intense development, you just can't fit on these lots regardless of what the theoretical maximum is. So, some pictures for you, those of you that did not drive by, this is the corner of Del Prado and 46th Street. You're kind of looking at the Monarch, Monarcha, sorry, Mexican restaurant, that's the back of it there. And then the first lot is a duplex that is already zoned, sorry, future land use of downtown mixed in the South Cape zoning. The next properties are one of the ones to be demolished, that was a single-family residence that already also has the downtown mixed zoning in the South Cape. And then, moving on, this is a view of the subject property that we're seeking the rezoning for. There's a square-on view of the subject property. I know I'm moving quickly because of the time limit. This is what's across the street, traveling tile, commercial, that has commercial trucks. And just, you can look at the size of that building, and you could see from what you just looked at, you can't build that building on the other side of the street, nor is it likely somebody would build that type of building on waterfront property. These are more views of what you see across the street. This is the area looking down the street, which I'll also show you. One of the concerns was the traffic concerns. There are multiple exits out of this area out to Del Prado. So the idea that changing this .41 acre, this three-lot site, is going to cause some sort of traffic concerns seems to be misplaced to us on behalf of the applicant. This is an example of the type of mixed-use building that you could get, not quite as large as the building you're looking at here, but this has professional offices on the bottom and residential above. This is the stated goal of the CRA, this is what the codes are designed to promote, and there's already one across the street. You could have a smaller version of this, that could be built on this, on this lot and these sizes. I wanted to show also that there's a landscape buffer that's already in place between this lot and the multifamily site you heard reference, that has a 10-unit multifamily building on it. And so here's an aerial view, you can see there's landscape buffers on both sides of it, that's the 10-unit building that acts as a multifamily buffer between this lot and the adjacent single-family homes. This is a close-up of that, and then just showing you, I'll actually show you, there are 10 units, because there were some questions in an earlier P&amp;Z hearing about what size that building was. This is looking across the street at the multifamily going on down that way, and a view down the street of what you see with the commercial and mixed-use multifamily. And that's the main exit to Del Prado from the Orchid Commons, where the monument is. And then there's another exit as well that comes out the back, this shows you the commercial area. And I was going to show you further that this whole area where you see up to this, you see the curved area is the main entrance to the Orchid neighborhood, if you will. And then, you have this one, five seconds and I'll finish. This is the exit from that commercial area that is currently already all downtown mixed and built out all as commercial. So there are three different ways to exit out of this property. We certainly stand ready to answer any questions you have. And if you hear things from the public input and you'd like to call us back up to ask any questions, we'd be happy to do that. And these are some points I'll leave you with as thoughts to how this meets all the goals of the CRA. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll now open up a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 57-25, please come forward.
You know, Kyle Lamadu, I just have a quick question. If this is rezoned and a subsequent lot next door to it is also purchased, can it be combined, and then something larger built that wasn't initially intended with this? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. My name is Dave Luzak, and I am here, and council members. I'm here with my fellow Orchid property owners, and we're here definitely in opposition to some of the commentary by the previous gentleman. The pictures, I think, just first and foremost, don't really reflect the issue, and I think I can bring up, my wife had a story this morning. At 8:40, she had to wait for three or four lights to get through going westbound on 46th to take a left onto Del Prado. So when the former presenter recommends or stating that there's all kinds of ingress/egress in and out of our subdues, and that's just absolutely not accurate. The only way you can go southbound is from this street. So it's my understanding that based on what's going on with 1620 and combining it with these other projects, there will be enough. And so the attorney who was quoted on TV yesterday is saying, oh, we can't build a four, five, or six-unit apartment building there. Well, where there's a way, there's a will, and this is definitely going to give them a larger property that, I don't know that for a fact, and unless there's somebody from the council that knows that for a fact, I think that's a bigger issue, or something that needs to be investigated at a minimum. Removing blight, I think, this property from the sellers has been neglected for, from what I understand from my neighbors, I've only been in the community about five years, for a decade or two or more, so we need to have something done. The traffic is horrendous. It took another 10 minutes for my wife just to get down Del Prado to get to Cape Coral Parkway with the impending bridge construction. We're going to have more issues all down the line. And at this point, they're preparing the property to be marketed. So when anybody represents and says, oh, we can't build a four, five, six-story, there's just not enough land there, I don't know that he's going to be around to answer the rest of our community and property members here when they say, oh yeah, we do want to build it. And this downtown mixed zoning will give them the right, because whatever they're guaranteeing right now and saying it won't be built, once that zoning, and that property has that zoning, it's we as the property owners that are all going to suffer with what gets to be built there. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm Dan Butler. I live just a few houses east of this proposed project area, and one of those who is going to certainly be burdened by it every time I try to get out to Del Prado. to certainly be burdened by it every time I try to get out to Del Prado and turn south. It's bad enough now. And I'd like to remind the council that we've been here and done this a few years, a few short years ago with a smaller project in the same area, a different developer, and the council turned him down for good cause. In court, we would call this a thing already adjudged, reis judicata. You can't just come in with a different developer and a more grandiose scheme and tell us, you know, "Whoa, this will be so good." I saw one chart up there, he said 51 units. Now, that's a lot of parking. Where's the parking? That was a problem with the previous proposal. The same problem we have now is the choke point at the south end, 46th Street, south end of Orchid Boulevard. That is not a standard width street. You even have now, you have to be careful and maybe drive off one side of the street if you meet somebody. And that was part of the issue before, it still exists. I want to say a few things about greed. Lots of greed in southwest Florida, lots of greed. First, we have our thieves. We have our con artists. We have our crooked contractors by the hundreds. And then, coming along behind them, we have a different kind of greed known as the developers. And I'll tell you what, they have no conscience. None of these people have any conscience. They don't care a whit what they might be doing to the interests of the people that their ideas will step on. And that's what it is. I don't want, I bought in 99, and I bought where I bought on an upscale neighborhood of single-family houses. Orchid Boulevard is on the way up. Let's not spoil it by convincing everybody that Orchid Boulevard is not readily egressible, because that's what it will be. These people will park on the street and will have even more burdens then than now. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Ann Allen. I'm also a resident in the Orchid neighborhood. I appreciate those of you who fielded all of our emails and replied. So I appreciate you taking the time, and that does give us some confidence in you guys that you are listening to us. I think we have a good show today, showing that we are here and we do have a big stake in our neighborhood. There are a couple of major topics that I feel. I think by changing this land use, it sets a precedent. It sets a precedence that if that one parcel that's adjacent, that now encroaches into the rest of our neighborhood. Now, other developers can come in and say, "Oh, look at these other blighted homes on multifamily homes on the opposite side of Orchid from our single-family. Let's go ahead and redo those, and let's change that blight." So, you know, you look at that, and we're losing the buffer, the potential buffer, and then the encroachment. And so by you allowing this, it sets the precedent. The proposal said that perhaps they create those mixed use where there's business on the bottom, apartment on the top. Make mention that the parking for that, there is a parking lot adjacent to. They are not asking for street parking. There is some. But just as the demolition was going on today, once you had the street parking for trebbing tile and then the demolition stuff, you could hardly get one vehicle through. If that's what we're in for, that's tragic. The traffic which my neighbors have already spoken about, the bottleneck that starts there, that's already, already an issue. On Orchid Boulevard, there's a currently, they're not occupied yet, but there are 14 units. They are one-bedroom, tiny closet, maybe studio units, one bathroom. That's going to bring an extra at least 14 residents into our Orchid neighborhood. The ingress/egress, that is on Orchid or cutting into the canal that will dump directly where that subject parcel is. Safety. I have two young kids. They like to ride their bikes. We don't, because there's already so much traffic. We like to walk. We see neighbors all the time. Everybody has dogs. This is immediately impactful when you now want to steer this, all this other traffic down through our neighborhood on top of it. We currently have a lot of massive growth going on in the southeast Cape. Bimini Basin is 2.2 miles. Yacht Club is 2.9. JC Park is 1.4. We don't even have an idea how all those big developments are going to impact our local area on traffic, on utilities, on emergency services. Currently, Cape Fire Station 1 and Lee County EMS Medic 4 service all of those areas. That is one unit for all this massive development. I think it would be a mistake to allow further encroachment and further development of this residential single-family zone. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Munn, and a resident of Orchid Boulevard. You know, they've talked about not anticipating a significant impact of traffic and that we have all these avenues in and out of our neighborhood. Traffic south on Del Prado in the mornings and to get across the Cape Coral Bridge is so bad, people frequently cut into our neighborhood and go out to this light by Monarcas on 46th Street where they're talking about adding this. My daughter and I walk to school every morning. She goes to Cape Elementary, and so it's a little less than a mile. And so we walk there, and we take 46th Street to get to school. And it may be stupid, but I enjoy my time with her in the morning, but we take our lives in our own hands every single day. It's been a good exercise on learning to look both ways and pay good attention to your surroundings. And so, just knowing how bad traffic already is in our neighborhood, to think about adding something that could have as many as 51 additional units, it would be, it would be truly tragic for our neighborhood. But thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Jeff Schwartz. I live in the same area, on Southeast 20th Avenue.
You're not being picked up on the mic.
I'm not being picked up on the mic. Okay, I don't even need the damn mic. Anyway, I'm looking at some of the things that were brought up today. A, the traffic around here is horrendous. I'm a cyclist. I can't even tell you how many times I've almost been hit, just walking, just riding on my own street. I'm looking at, they said, the minimum impact, but yet they're saying they're going from residential units of six to 51. Let's see what else. Population 15, 128. Gallons of water from 1,200 to 2,100 or 2,200, I can't quite read that, 2,160. So obviously, there is tremendous potential impact from this development. It's not minor. It's not small, and it will impact a small neighborhood. The traffic is horrendous. Walking is dangerous. Those properties, yes, they have been a problem, but the buffer that's there, somebody even mentioned it from council, that buffer is there for a reason, to prevent encroachment on residential neighborhoods from commercial construction. So it sounds like this is exactly that. You are creating this encroachment. That buffer was created for a reason, and it should not be approved. Thank you.
Hello, Julia Tari. I don't live in this neighborhood, but the first neighborhood I did live in was Palaco Grande. And back in the 90s, that was the residential area down Del Prado. And I'm looking at these people, and most of you who know, this started with the JC Park fight. These people don't want this. This is their neighborhood. This is where their children live. This is where they live. And they don't want it to turn into a commercial area. So this is a good opportunity for all of you to say, "You know what? We do listen. With all the bad publicity you get, these, you know, this is not a good thing to do to a little neighborhood. Those are our old neighborhoods. Those are our historic neighborhoods. They have their little signs, they have their community, and they take care of it, and they love their community." And I think it would be really terrible to dismiss that and just say, "Well, progress is progress." Because we have so much commercial and so much building in the North Cape. Most of you live in nice areas up north, so do I, but we don't have to worry about whether our kids are riding their bikes, that they're going to get hit by a car, or even our grandchildren. So my, although I know you don't like to listen to me, but my suggestion would be, listen to them. It's their neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Matt Borwinkle, resident of the Orchid Boulevard neighborhood. I'm also a retired traffic crash reconstruction unit supervisor for the Illinois State Police. I personally worked over 1,500 fatal and injury crashes over my career. And in course of looking at the maps that were up here just earlier, the only safe egress out of that neighborhood is at that lighted intersection at 46, where this developed, proposed development is taking place. It's already unsafe at that intersection, because there's not even a turn, protected turn signal there. Furthermore, the other points of egress to the north along Del Prado are not protected, and trying to cross and turn left across six-lane divided highway where the posted speed limit is 40, you have a combined speed posted of 80 miles per hour. And typical traffic runs 50 or 60 miles per hour on Del Prado. So you're talking an average of around 100 to 120 mile-per-hour combined speed in both directions. And forcing residents to have to take those two other points of egress will definitely lead to a higher rate of injury or fatal traffic crashes coming out of this neighborhood. So my point being that, in all this, I echo what my neighbors have just brought up for all of these points, but for the point of safety, before anything is allowed to move forward on this development, FHP or Florida DOT should at least do a traffic safety study of this intersection and those other points of egress before anyone else is allowed to make a development on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 57-25? Seeing none, public hearings now closed. I will open up for council discussion. Council member Laster.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Mr. Santora, can you bring up, I'm sorry, I'm not feeling well again, it's a pattern, kidding. Can you bring up the current land use and the properties surrounding it? And Mr. Hertz, are you able to come up? I want, I want you to talk through a little bit regarding the density concerns as well as the traffic concerns. I did ask during my one-on-one meetings yesterday about the emails that I received, and that's why, to those of you that sent emails and I responded, I sent you a copy of this, because I wanted you all to be aware of what is zoned around you. And as you can see, and I think as Mr. Lamedu brought up, you know, what's to stop that one lone property, you see that brown property with the building that's multifamily, from going, going the other direction? There's not. I mean, I don't know who owns that property. Do you know, Mr. Hertz, who owns that property right next to?
I, the property to the...
East.
East, we do not. It is, it is no relation to my clients, and it's an existing 10-unit multifamily.
Got it. So to answer your question, Mr. Lamedu, yes, the potential purchaser for this property could approach that, you know, I mean, it's private property rights, all right? And then, neighbors, neighborhood, you won't have any buffer, right? You will not have a buffer. Now, I want Mr. Hertz to try to talk through the density thing, because, you know, we don't know what's going to go there. This property is already, you know, being demoed, getting ready for sale. We don't know who's going to buy it, so we don't know. But what I don't, you know, want to see happen is, God forbid, a car wash in that, because I dealt with that on the Mass Canal, and I still have PTSD from that. So if you could explain the density questions, the safety concerns, and the traffic study for these residents.
Just a comment on the car wash. I don't think you can do that in...
You can't, because it's too small.
You cannot do that here. So if you have that concern...
But what if they assemble, but what if they assemble that next property? Then they could...
You still can't, you...
In regards to car washes, you cannot code the past ordinances that was passed last year, specify that car washes have to be, maintain specific distances and have to be along our major collectors and thoroughways.
I'm so glad we learned. Thank you. Thank you.
So just taking the theoretical, right? This picture's great that's on the screen. So the subject property is the one in the red box. To the west of that property is the other property that is owned by my client, which they do wish to strap together to sell to a future developer. And then, the next property is a duplex, right? So that whole stretch is 3, 2 plus 3 is eight lots, right? The odds of a developer also purchasing the Monarch Mexican restaurant and then building a whole complex there, that's a whole nother world, right? But even with that, you're nowhere near this amount of land that you have where the Cove is or these other things. So when we talk about the density concern, some of the concerns that were raised about the parking make the, make the point in my client's favor. You can't, they're correct. You can't fit the parking on the site to have that many residential units, because those residential units come with a requirement for parking spaces. And you can't physically fit them. The site's not wide enough, deep enough, to have the internal circulation that's required to have a parking space and then have a drive lane that allows people to pull in and out of the parking spaces. And you have to have internal circulation on the site per the Cape Coral Land Development Use Codes, right? You can't just drive in and then back out. You have to be able to turn and come back out. So you need two lanes, right, of traffic in and out to meet the requirements. So when I say that you can't build a six-story building, as a licensed general contractor and someone who built a number of the larger buildings in the CRA prior to the Cove and the building, I built three of the buildings on Club Square. We built the first three-story building down there, which the CRA supported at the time. I built the building that used to be, we call it the winery, where the grape escape was, if some of you remember that, next to the Realtor Board. We built a number of these buildings with all of these constraints, and those were buildings on Cape Coral Parkway, right? I'm sorry, I misspoke, on Club Square, where you had parking, right? So it was mitigated. But some of these other buildings where you have to have your own parking and you have to meet the requirements, you just can't do it. That's what I meant by you couldn't fit everything in there. So that's why I used the Autobahn example for you. Just because there's no speed limit doesn't mean you can get your, your little car, your three-cylinder car, to go 180 miles an hour. So yes, could somebody build a two-story building there, like the one I showed that's mixed use? I think, I think you could make that work, and it would make economic sense on the water there to do something like that. But you could not build a six-story condominium building at that maximum density, because you just can't meet all of the other requirements that are already in the Cape Coral codes and regulations. And then, you know, as to the safety and the lights, if there's an issue when a development comes in to build, you know, and they have to provide the road impact studies and things like that where someone's going to build, if there's an issue that's going to, if someone's going to do something that's different than from what you can do by right, then perhaps this issue of a dedicated turn signal could solve some of these problems. I mean, it sounded like that was a solvable issue, and certainly the increased tax rolls and things that are all the things the CRA is designed to do. The challenge here is, is this, these homes are all next to where the CRA is. This matches the goals of the CRA. The blight isn't just the, looking at something being dilapidated. It's, the blight is defined as what's the highest and best use of the property. The whole goal of the CRA is to get new development in there that increases the tax rules to create, create the tax differential that allows the CRA to spend all that money on the infrastructure and things. The staff analysis you had done says the infrastructure's already there to support all of this. There's not any water and sewer issues. Transportation says the transportation infrastructure is adequate to handle it. And then, as you saw on the aerials, you already have this use, there's acres and acres. Right here, there's acres and acres of downtown mixed. Adding three more lots is making a difference.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to be rude, but we're off task now. They asked a specific question about the safety, about the density, and those questions have been answered. So I'm just one, but this is going back to make a case for his client himself, though.
I'm sorry. My apologies. I just wanted to hear...
I don't want to be rude.
...his point of view, and I understand that. And just hypothetically speaking then, Mr. Hertz, if, let's say, downtown mixed use is approved, and let's say there's a two-story building, there's nothing to say that, you know, you could have, similar to some other buildings that are on Del Prado, where you park underneath and the building's on top, that, that could be possible too, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And about how many parking spaces would, would we be zoned for then?
Well, it would be based on the square footage and the use, whether it's residential or professional. Professional, I think, is two per thousand of... You know, I haven't looked... Residential's based on the bedroom, so per bedroom you have to have...
It has one per three or 400 square feet.
So it'd be one for every, every 300 to 400 square feet would be required. So again, that's, that's what I'm trying to say, that there are, besides the theoretical maximum density, the code has things that limit the amount you can build on there to meet those requirements. So professional would be one every 300 or 400 square feet, and then residential is one per...
One per bed.
Per bedroom.
Okay, so then combine both sites. Let's hypothetically talk. Not even hypothetically, actually, what are, what is the square footage of both, of both of those parcels then?
The square footage of both those parcels...
Together.
Together is, it's a total of five lots. It is 200 by 150.
Okay.
I didn't do the, I didn't do that math in my, I'm sorry, I didn't have that in my I didn't do the, I didn't do that math in my, I'm sorry, I didn't have that in my head ahead of time. 200 times 150 would be the total square footage.
Okay. And then what I guess.
30,000.
What?
30,000 square feet.
Okay.
So you're, you're, you're still, you're still, you know, with that little less than three quarters of an acre, right? We're still way less than 42,580. That, that makes an acre.
And then I think, and I think too, I mean, that obviously the biggest concern with the residents, you know, is this. And I'm, I'm scared for you residents because I see this, I see this. And I see that that, that is your one buffer. And if that goes, you don't have a buffer. And then you have all these yellow here as you continue into your neighborhood that are currently single-family residential. So when those go, you know, that's it. You've got all that commercial, which could be multifamily. And there's no guarantee on that, right? Because I don't know who's going to be sitting up here when that happens. So I'm going to listen to my colleagues and I'm, I'm listening to all of you. And I'm, I read your emails and that's why I sent this back to you because I wanted you to see this. I wanted you to realize that, yes, encroaching is, is definitely possible. And with that said, you know, there isn't one of us up here that agrees that we need to take the burden off of those of us ad of alarm taxpayers so that we can right side our commercial tax base. And when we don't approve things like this, that takes away from it. But again, as I've said a million times before, sitting up here, it has to be the right fit. So I'm going to listen to my colleagues here, what they have to say, and then I'll weigh in. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Kadu.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lastra pretty much said everything that I was going to say. However, it's my understanding that this is a future land use map change. Therefore, if this were approved tonight, it would still have to go to the hearing examiner for a rezone. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
You would have to still change that, I believe.
The zoning.
For at least that one property.
And that is when you guys should come and talk to the hearing examiner.
So, so if I could just clarify, the RML district per our comprehensive plan is permitted as an existing district within the downtown mix. So if this was approved, a rezone would not be necessary. However, if they were to answer the first speaker's question about whether or not they could conjoin these properties together for larger development, as these two properties would have inconsistent and different land use classifications on them, we would not permit them to be strapped together. So therefore, the rezone would be required. And again, the LOI from the applicant states that they are looking to rezone this. So specifically when it comes to questions about the individual densities and allowances, the analysis staff did in the report specifies that it goes off of the allowable for the most intensive zoning district permissible. That is the South Cape zoning district. If it remained the RML district, that's currently what the existing is proposed on. Again, what is represented is the permissible, not the actual what will most likely be built. As it's specified in the staff report, it is found that such densities are usually done at roughly a quarter to a third FAR. Currently, the South Cape permits four FAR. South Cape also permits commercial construction and uses. Again, on a local roadway, they are limited. So they could not implement the, the varied intensive uses we find along our primary designated corridors in the South Cape. But they could implement specific commercial. Is that what would most likely occur at this location? Probably not. This question was asked at the Planning and Zoning Commission in regards to future development possibilities. You know, based off of the land constraints, the requirements of the Land Development Code, the requirements of the Florida Building Code, typical pro formas for people that are looking to develop those parcels, you would probably end up, especially on a canalway with a multifamily development, maybe a small ground floor commercial area like a coffee shop or something. But it would primarily be residential in nature, given the current market.
Retailer restaurant.
Most likely something around that nature that is supportive to the uses up above. So I, I just wanted to clarify that. And I'm sorry if I.
No, no, thank you. That was great. I guess a lot of what we heard and via email is the traffic concerns. And it's my understanding that if something were to be developed there, this would have to be addressed.
That is correct. Any, anytime a project goes through development here in the city, it has to go through the pre-application process where, you know, city staff takes a look at a lot of different parameters of the project. And then it goes to our site development permits, which again, it's, city staff looks at it and addresses things like traffic concerns, utilities, development intensities. If it is large scale, over 300 typical trips, they, we require traffic analysis to be conducted. In regards to the traffic concerns, I can understand why there is a lot of traffic on this roadway. This is the only left way out onto Del Prado. There are other possibilities and I'm just spitballing, you know, it. If you had other opportunities to make that left onto Del Prado heading south, that could alleviate some of the traffic congestion coming out this way. I mean, the CRA, when it was implemented, utilized Orchid, which is a boulevard-esque streetway into the neighborhood as the defining line between the CRA and the residential neighborhood that exists to the east. I don't have it specifically on here, but on the east side of Orchid Boulevard is where the CRA line comes. And then it comes down across, I believe, this property here or this one here. I'm not exactly sure. Across the canalway and then over. So the idea was always intensive that Orchid Boulevard would be that kind of gateway into the neighborhood. In such a time now, having only one light along the multiple egress points, a lot of people most likely choose that as the primary method of exiting and entering the neighborhood. There are some strategic things that could be implemented. We would have to be studied for possible improvements. Maybe the intersection in Orchid gets another light. Maybe there's a left out opportunity there, maybe a left out opportunity somewhere. Again, that would all have to be studied, but possibilities do exist. There is solutions to a lot of problems, but I can definitely understand the, the concerns from the residents to that point. And for the traffic concerns just along Southeast 46, I can understand that as well, being a heavily trafficked area. Again, there are implementations that could be done in the streetscape, which could help alleviate some of those things. You know, there could be, oh man, I'm blanking on the term now. Speed bumps, speed humps, traffic tables. I, I'm just, I'm just spitballing, just spitballing.
Please, please keep your comments.
There could be different opportunities. There also could be narrowing points to reduce traffic speeds, to reduce volume. Things like that that could be implemented. But again, when it comes to the actual implementation of uses that is handled at the site development phase, when we know what is going to be constructed and what is required to be built.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Lehman.
Yeah. Mr. Hertz, couple of questions, please. How wide is 46th Street?
Ma'am, I, I don't know the answer to that question. I apologize.
My understanding, just so that you know, it's 16 feet wide.
Oh, I'm.
That would be.
From, from physically being on it, I, I can't tell you the exact dimensions, but it is significantly wider than 16 feet. There's parallel parking on both sides. And with, with my Bronco, with my Bronco parked on, on the side in front of the multi, the mixed use building I showed across the street, there was rooms for cars to go in both directions. So it's impossible that it's only 16 feet wide.
Please, please keep your comments to yourself.
At least, at least, ma'am, at least in the area where this property is. I don't know about further down the street, but where this property is, it's definitely wider than 16 feet.
All right. Not only that, you keep, I think one of the things that very much concerns me, and I'm sure it concerns the residents, you keep, you keep talking about, well, they could build this or they could build that if the zoning is changed. Rather ambiguous, isn't it? You don't know what exactly they have planned to build. Is that correct?
Well, actually, ma'am, what I talked most about was what they could not build because you, you can't meet the requirements of the Land Development Code. But no, I can't tell you what someone who, a future purchaser of the property is going to build. That's not, that's not possible for me to do. But again, that's the purpose of your development site review that when they come in to apply for a permit, that's when those issues can be addressed. But what I did say is the concern of the six-story building, you, you just simply can't build that there. You can't meet all of the requirements of the Land Development Code as applied to the South Cape zoning in the downtown mixed district. You can't meet those requirements on this amount of land.
Thank you.
Your word.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular item gathered my attention quite a bit and spoke with a number of the residents. And I handled a, a bit of emails, as I'm sure my colleagues did as well. And I'm so glad that J.C. Park was brought up because the way I address this is the same way I address the J.C. Park issue, but in an opposite way. And that is when I look at these decisions, I think it's incumbent upon me, and I think it's incumbent upon all of us, to look at the longest term, greatest benefit to the greatest number of people with the negative impact coming to the fewest number of people. J.C. Park certainly making that park attractive to and useful for a greater number of people throughout the Cape. At that time, my opinion outweighed the negative impact that it would have. In this case, I believe it's the opposite. I believe the number of people that this benefits is a much smaller number than the number of people that it negatively impacts. My concern, as was brought up, was the potential for assemblage. One property, yeah, I can't do as much with it. Additional properties, all of a sudden you get more and more options. Can the assemblage happen? Yes, we've seen it happen all over our city. And so I have a concern for assemblage there that, it's not that it, it's not that it wouldn't fit, if you will, the decor with treving tile there and with menorcas there in the corner. But it certainly would impact ingress egress into this neighborhood. Speed bumps, you don't need speed bumps when everybody's sitting bumper to bumper dead still trying to get out onto Del Prado. So speed bumps solve nothing in this case. The fact that there are three points of entry and exit, it depends which direction you're going. One of those three points, you can only go north. There is a median that, that dis enables you from, from heading south to go out in the, in the, in the, the one above 46th Street. You take your life into your own hands if you can get out into the backed up traffic that's already heading south on Del Prado. So that one traffic light is the only way you're getting out to go south. When you think about a mixed use going in there as the picture was shown, you know, residential parking, to some degree, people are there. Yeah, they go to Publix once in a while and whatnot. But if you put mixed use in there, now you get people coming and going from the commercial establishments on, on the first level. And so for me, all those, all those things considered, with so many things, well, you, you might be able to do this, you might not be able to do that without a, a traffic study in place that said this is definitely what would need to be done if in fact that property were to go through the changes that we're looking at. I'm sorry, but I just can't support it at this point. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
I just want to say it measures 38 feet on Google Earth, almost 40 feet.
Madam City Clerk, I got a couple papers here. Let's put up on the, on the projector if we could. With the one on top being the first. And I guess, one of the things I wanted to, to take a look at is the ingress egress, how that would impact. This first Google Earth picture that I have, that I added a yellow line down the last street there before it gets over to Orchid, is anything to the west of that yellow line and north of Southeast 46th Street, all of those businesses in that area is all a commercial type business. To the east of that yellow line is the buffer. Most of those houses are duplexes or, that, that's the buffer between the commercial development and the residential neighborhood, which is east of Orchid, the double lane road that you're looking there. So when you look at the two parcels that are, we are discussing here today, that is to the left of that 10-unit multifamily, if that was approved, there still is a buffer, that multifamily, that larger multifamily unit. The two houses to the right of that multifamily in the vacant lot, if I recall correctly, several years ago, was the applicant came forward. They wanted to change those parcels from single family to multifamily, if I recall correctly. And we denied it as a council. So I, I think that, you know, this is a tough one for me personally. We just got some information and a presentation here in the last couple of weeks. Today, our commercial tax base to residential tax base were the high 8%. And the remaining is all residential. So we only have a high 8% commercial tax base in the city. And over 91% is still residential. So that tax burden is on the shoulders. And I know we all have advocated to increase our commercial tax base. So that's why it's difficult for me. Could you go to the next page, please? One of the things that I wanted to look at, if you could scoot that up a little bit. Yeah, there you go. There's three intersections that I highlighted there. One is signalized, that's the one in pink, that I'm, I'm assuming that a lot of residents in, back in the Orchid neighborhood, if they want to make a left and go down to Cape Coral Parkway, that's probably the intersection that they used. And then there's two non-signalized intersections and those are highlighted in yellow. So there are three intersections to gain access either in or out with some restrictions. If you could go to the next slide. This here is the south intersection, the furthest south intersection. This is the signalized intersection that you can either go across, completely across Del Prado. You can make a right or a left on a Del Prado and do that fairly safely because it is a signalized intersection. Could you go to the next? The next intersection is the middle intersection that was shown, which is the first intersection that's non-signalized when you're traveling north from Southeast 46th Street. That particular intersection, you can make a left onto Del Prado or a right onto Del Prado. I will tell you in rush hour traffic, because I've done it myself, it's probably a little difficult and probably not that safe. But that particular intersection, you can turn left or right onto Del Prado. If you could bring up the last one, I believe. This is the northern part intersection that was mainly put in for Orchid because this is Orchid Parkway, where you have a, a single travel lane going east and west. And I believe it has a bike path on, on Orchid Parkway. But this is a non-signalized intersection, as you can see in the picture, because of the way the intersection is constructed. This particular intersection, if you're coming out of Orchid, you can only travel north on Del Prado. If you are coming south on Del Prado, there is a turn lane where you can turn in at this intersection. Or if you're traveling north of the, north on Del Prado, south of the Orchid Parkway, you can make a right into that. So there is three ingress egress. Some of them are ideal, some of them aren't. I really believe that this particular intersection here, it's, at some point in time down the road, probably should be a signalized intersection. I think that would alleviate a lot of the problems, not only for the businesses that are there, but also for the, for the community and, and as far as back there in Orchid. So I think what we have to ask ourselves today, and I heard some of this tonight, the what ifs, what if this happened? What if that happens? We can't really make a decision, in my opinion, on what ifs. So the applicant has already said that, you know, this particular. So the applicant has already said that, you know, this particular parcel that he wants to change to future land uses, he's already said that he, he wants to strap it to the, to the other parcel. There will be about five lots combined then. And I'm, I'm assuming the five lots that he's talking about is the 40 by 125. So that's, we all know that a standard lot, buildable lot in Cape Coral is two lots, which are 80 by 125, two 40-foot lots, to include an 80. So the other thing that was mentioned here tonight by staff is, no matter who wants to build something on that, on those two parcels, again, we could sit here and what if it all night, what it's going to go there, we don't know. We're here just to hear the future land use classification as far as the hearing's concerned. But we do know, and staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, if a developer comes in and wants to build on these two parcels, say they, this is approved and it's strapped together, then they, they have to meet certain criteria. Well, they'll have to look at the traffic component, whether this traffic signal here on Del Prado and Southeast 46th will be adequate, or do they need to add others? Again, I think that Orchid and Del Prado should be a signalized location, but they would probably have to do some type of traffic study as far as their permitting process. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. They would, there's a lot of criteria that we require being out, analyzed when a development comes in. And traffic is one of those requirements. If it is determined by the city that there would be a monsteral impact to traffic, we would require them to procure a specific traffic study and provide that to us to illustrate that. We would still look at the, the use and the traffic analysis both that we conduct and that the applicant would bring in and make determinations on if things still need to be, let's say, upgraded or if the existing infrastructure, the roadway, is sufficient to incorporate that.
So that gives me a little more level of comfort to know that that will be analyzed if that was to be approved later on. Again, this is a tough one for me because there is so much commercial. It's in the CRA already. One of the things that we're trying to do is eliminate blight and do some revitalization. This property is in the CRA district. You know, the PMZ board approved it, the land development criterias. We met all the criterias. Staff has approved it. So everybody has checked the boxes. I guess we have to decide by tonight's testimony, the testimony from, from the residents, what, what is, what is in the, in the, in the best interest. So it's a tough one for me, I'll be honest with you.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure I understood that about the traffic study. Is it they must do one or city staff would decide based on what they submitted, whether they needed to do one?
So it is my understanding that if they come in with a specific use and that use hits a threshold of maximum peak hour trips, they are required to submit a traffic study. However, if staff in their analysis of the traffic and the proposed use makes a determination that, hey, this is going to be very impactful for the traffic in the neighborhood, we can require them to provide us with a traffic analysis study.
So you can require them, but it's not a must require them?
Unless they meet that specific threshold. That is a must, but we can require them if they are submitting to provide one.
Well, as it, as it relates to eliminating a slum and blight that, this is a part of the CRA, we, we gave the demolition grants to eliminate the slum and blight. That's not to say that a gorgeous home or a gorgeous duplex can't be put on that, on that property right now, correct?
That is correct. I mean, it is a developable parcel that is RML. So a development in line with the densities and requirements could be constructed there.
Okay, great. So I, I don't have a, I don't have a change in my opinion. Thanks.
Councilmember Kaduk.
Thank you, Mayor. It really boils down for all of us, do we want in the CRA downtown mixed use or multifamily residential? That's the question we have to ask each other up here tonight when you're voting, you're conscious. That's all.
Councilmember Donnell.
Yeah, it's one of those things that I, I don't want to talk because I would just want to vote and turn my head, but that's just like I'm, I'm built. Thank you all for coming out. The, the answer that you want to hear is that we're going to do nothing. Anything other than that is a lose. That's just the bottom line. Tonight, for me, one vote, understanding everything that's at stake here, understanding what you're saying. Thing that's sticking out is the traffic and the safety. I get it. But for me, for tonight, is the first step of two. I think the larger concern is what's going to come. And since I've been in this seat, this is my ninth year, I have never made a vote on what might happen. So I know you're going to be upset with me, but I'm sitting here. For the next three years, I'll be here. The next part is about what's going to go there. I think that's really, that the, something's going to go there. And what you hear from the council, whether it's required or not, it's going, it has to come through this council. And the traffic study, any council who's up here, that's going to be something that's going to be told staff to do. And that's when this really takes the, the level for me. So I'm just saying to you for tonight, it's about the strapping. It's a no-brainer for me as far as getting the CRA, the commercial. But you have my commitment. Anybody that knows me, I'm a man of my word. You have my word to that piece that when it comes back, the traffic and the safety has to meet the criteria that's acceptable to us to get this one person's vote. So I'm sorry, I know that's not what you want to hear, but that's where my vote lies. And I want you to know that instead of just not saying anything.
Councilmember. Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear and that, and that Councilmember Donnell, that, that you were clear as well. Up to a 51-unit structure would not need to come back before us.
So again, you're talking development. Currently, this is only future land use. There will be, based upon the applicant's LOI, there will be a submitted rezoning request to change this to South Cape, which permits up to 50, to 125 units per acre, which equals roughly, I think, based on the .41 acres, the 51 or 53 units. That rezoning, council does have to approve that. So that would be coming back before you for approval. Individual developments, unless there's city money associated with that or specific infrastructure improvements that require city sign-off, that could be coming back to council. But as far as specific developments, no, that does not get heard by council.
My understanding is without the rezoning, it would still be RML.
Correct.
And RML would be allowed within the, the new designation.
Correct.
And the RML would allow 51 units.
The RML does not permit 51 units. The RML, if you look at, sure, let me go here. So if you look at the existing multifamily, which is on the left, multifamily only permits two, two zoning districts. The RML district, which it currently is zoned as, in the RMM, which is the higher density district. So the existing is based off of that RML. So based off of the requirements for maximum units per acre, which I believe is 16, you take that specifically underneath, multiply it by the .41, you get to six units. That is what could be developed on that property as an RML property. Now again, to answer your question, if the downtown mix was approved, policy 1.15, table one specifies that within that classification, the RML zoning district is permissible as an existing zoning district. So it would not have to come back or does not necessarily have to be approved if it does come back for a rezone. But again, we're talking about the future land use designation and the classification for that.
And I get it, but your, the chart says the proposed allows 51 dwelling units.
Correct, because it's based off of the maximum allowable zoning district. So within downtown mix, the South Cape zoning district is permitted, which permits 125 units per acre. That unit, that designation for zoning is not permitted in the multifamily classification. So you could just remove that. The only two that are permitted are the RML and the RMM. So we use the existing RML as the designation for what could be constructed today. And then the proposed goes off of the highest density and the highest, most intensive use that would be permitted for each individual category. So again, within the downtown mix, you could implement the South Cape zoning district, which allows 125 units. You could also implement specific commercial uses. And both of those are up to a four FAR intensity. Again, that's what you could do, is that what could be physically constructed on the site? Most likely not, based on physical constraints. So I just want to clarify, that's why when you see the proposal and if you look at it in the staff report, it specifies that this is why we came up with these specific numbers. Does that clarify it a little or?
So if zoning does not, if rezoning does not occur, what is that 51 replaced by?
Six.
So it remains the same?
It remains the same. The rezoning does not have to occur as the RML is permitted in the downtown mixed zoning district.
If I could clarify, they're asking for it to be future land use map. The current is multifamily residential. They're asking for it to be changed to downtown mixed. That is what you are here before. If they want to go beyond what the existing zoning, which is presently RML, they're going to have to come before you. So you're only here for the future land use map amendment. And that's, and that's still, and that still is limited by the existing zoning. Even if you were to approve it, they still have RML, which is six units. If they want to change that, if they want to strap it, they got to come before you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no other lights on, we have ordinance 57-25. I'll entertain a motion.
Both should approve ordinance 57-25.
All right, in a second. All right. Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinkie.
No.
Donnell.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Kaduk.
Aye.
Kilrain.
Aye.
I'm going to have to say no.
Lehman.
No.
Aye.
Five ayes, three nays, motion carried.
Okay, I think we'll take a 15-minute break and then we'll come back and resume our agenda.